Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, good evening, Chairman. Today is Tuesday, February 25th in the year 2025. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Bergen Record, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on February 21st of 2025. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public.
Thank you, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Here.
Councilwoman Prinzeri.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dr. Josai.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
We have six commissioners present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please? Mike?
I got Matt, Tanya, Eric, Joseph, and Cam. Do you guys want any testimony tonight? Going to be the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Do we have any correspondence, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. We have one item on the agenda. I'll wear the applicant's attorney would like to make a request before you, so if you wouldn't mind, maybe they could come up right now?
Sure, absolutely.
All right.
Which cases, Cam?
Old Business, C.
Yeah, we're gonna have two actually.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening. 322 went in. This was previously carried to this evening. We did receive a request from Commissioner O'Day's office to carry this application and speak with him about the project. We're happy to oblige that, so no problem carrying this to earliest date the board would like to give us.
What case is this?
It's under Old Business, Item C. Next meeting is the 11th of March.
If the board doesn't think they have too full of an agenda on that night, happy to take that date.
Cam? I'm sure we have a full agenda. We have a full agenda every night.
Full agenda. Given that this is old business, though, perhaps we could accommodate it.
Okay, so let's carry it to a date certain, March 11th, with preservation of notice.
Applicants very grateful for that. And also, case number...
Counsel, you waive the time for the board tact?
Of course.
Case number 20, P23-024. This is fairly late in the agenda. This is 772-788 Westside Avenue. There are also some emails that were circulated a couple hours before this hearing requesting the application be carried, so we're, we don't think we're getting through this anyway, so we're happy to carry this.
Okay, Cam, where does that... That's gonna be a problem, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so case P23-024, preliminary and final major site plan with variances and minor subdivision for 772 to 788 Westside Avenue. We're gonna carry to a date certain, March 25th, with reservation of notice.
Sorry, we consent to the tolling of time as well for that.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Anything else, Cam?
All right, and we have Mr. Harrington.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Yeah, I'm here on, for this case... I'm sorry. Yeah, Charles Harrington, for the record, Charles Harrington of Conneville. Case number 21, 701 Newark Avenue. That's the last item on the agenda. Requesting that be carried to the March 11th meeting, and I'll tell you why. It's that Matt and I had talked about a month ago or so before that to place it on tonight's agenda. And then when the February 11th meeting got canceled, we, it's kind of a little bit of a mix-up between Matt and I. I had noticed for it. I understood that it wasn't going to be heard tonight, but I asked if it could be listed so I can carry it to March 11th. So the plan was to carry it to March 11th, or hear it on March 11th.
So you noticed for tonight with the intent of carrying to March 11th?
I, when I noticed, I did not understand that Matt was going to put it on the 11th.
Okay.
We're okay with the 11th, Cam?
Yeah.
Okay, so case P2024-0190 for a site plan amendment at 701 Newark Ave. We're gonna carry to a date certain, March 11th, with preservation of notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. That's all, Cam?
That concludes correspondence, and the sunshine announcement is B1 in evidence.
Okay, thank you. So let's get into Old Business. Item A is case P2024-0222 is a site plan extension for 252 Central Avenue. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvell and Misselli, on behalf of the applicant AK471 LLC. Very simply, this application this evening is for a one-year extension to the approval that was granted and memorialized on December 13th of 2022. That approval would have expired December 13th of 2024, so we're here seeking just one out of the three one-year extensions. Just very briefly as to why the applicant had some financing issues and struggles getting financing. I'm happy to say that after speaking with him earlier before this hearing, he has obtained the necessary financing, and he hopes to be able to complete this project, or at least begin this project, within the next year. So the one-year extension would take us to December 13th of 2025, if granted this evening.
Okay. Any questions, anybody? All right, thank you, counsel. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anyone here from public?
Chair, see no one from public. I wish to close the public portion.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Joe, anything?
Does the applicant's team agree to the original conditions from the original site plan approval?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, then.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0222 as presented.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, someone do a roll call?
Yeah, okay, so Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinzeri.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Ayes.
Commissioner Dr. Josai.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to Item B. Is case P2024-0243 is a one-year extension for 804 to 810 Westside Avenue. Anybody? Cam, do we have anybody for this application that you know of?
They should be here, so...
Okay.
804 Westside, is that you, Mr. Harrington?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that's Rebecca is an associate of ours. That, actually, we'll withdraw that right now. Not withdraw, but it can be adjourned to a date uncertain because there's some issues, and I apologize for, we didn't contact the board earlier. We need to look at some issues on that. So we will get back to planning and have to renotice for any future hearing.
Okay.
Okay. So just for the record, we're gonna adjourn case P2024-0243, and we'll move on to New Business. Item 9, case P2025-0037 is a review and discussion to permit a billboard use in the Chapel Avenue Industrial Park redevelopment plan. Formal action may be taken.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Robert Kavanaugh, the law firm of Waters McPherson McNeil. We represent Pacific Outdoor Advertising, which is proposing this billboard amendment to the redevelopment plan over Chapel Avenue Industrial Park. The application seeks to amend the Chapel Avenue Industrial Park redevelopment plan to permit an outdoor advertising signage as a principal use within the park zone. The amendment would apply only to those lots that are adjacent to the New Jersey Turnpike and Interstate 78 Highway right-of-way. The request is in response to Jersey City Resolution 25-82, which directs the planning board to review the incorporation of billboards as a permitted use, and where appropriate, prepare an amendment or revision to the redevelopment plan, and that's why we're here tonight, seeking your approval to do that. Should the board approve the amendment, we will then submit a subsequent development application for the installation of the billboard that is consistent with the terms of the approved amendment. The applicant's planner, Mr. McDonough, has prepared a principal points of statement outlining the key elements of the proposal, which we had submitted to the planning department, which has been to the planning department. While Mr. McDonough is unavailable this evening, I spoke to him earlier. I thought he was going to try to make it, but he's tied up in another planning board meeting. But we would be happy to have him provide testimony at the next available meeting if necessary, and should the board require further insight or clarification regarding the master plan and the planning analysis supporting the amendment. In conclusion, in light of the foregoing, we respectfully request your approval of this amendment to redevelopment plan. Once the amendment is approved, we'll proceed with submitting the development application for the installation of the billboard, and in accordance with the amendments and your conditions and requirements.
Counsel, before I move on, does the name Al Mahdi ring a bell?
Al Mahdi?
Is he connected to this application?
Not that I'm aware of. Our client is, the principal of our client is Joseph Jacobs.
Okay, but this is that stretch...
Well, this is the whole redevelopment.
But the property in particular that we're talking about is that little sliver coming east on 78?
Heading west. We would be...
Heading west.
It's, where it is, is where the municipal complex is.
Okay, we're fine, then.
We're, okay.
Thank you.
Trying to determine any conflict.
Yeah.
Trying to determine any conflict.
Thought I may have had a conflict there.
Okay, okay.
Tanya, we have Mr. McDonough's principal points.
Yes.
Normally, we'd have Mr. McDonough here and testifying, and I don't know if you've had the opportunity to review that, and if you're looking to maybe comment on, from a planning standpoint. Chairman, I don't know how the board feels about proceeding without planning testimony, even though you do have his points.
We have the points, but we do need some kind of testimony on record.
I could, I could, I could proceed one of two ways. I could have Mr. McDonough provide a writing that I could submit to the board, if that would be, if that would suffice. If not, I will bring him in at the next meeting and have him put testimony on the record for any questions that you have. I mean, I truly thought I could get him here tonight. I spoke to him, it was later, it was about an hour, hour and a half ago, and he was unfortunately conflicted between two planning boards, and I guess mine was not a priority.
So, Chairman, we know Mr. McDonough. I deal with Mr. McDonough quite often. I am sure he is at two other meetings. However, we might get lucky. He might be at two other meetings here in Hudson County, and he might get here before the close of the meeting.
Right, he may, he may.
So... Why don't we move on for now, then?
Do you think it's possible that he may be able to get here tonight?
I will, I will make another call. If not, I'll send him a text and see if he'll at least respond to that. People seem to like those nowadays. And I hate them, but, and I will see if I can get him to respond to that. I, you know, and I'll come back before you and let you know, one way or the other, where we're at.
Mr. McDonough is a Gen Xer, I assume?
I guess.
I just read...
I don't even know what I am. I know I'm a boomer, they said.
I'm pretty sure he's a boomer.
They told me I'm a dinosaur.
We all fit into those categories, so a Gen Xer will respond to a text.
Okay.
So, give it a shot.
All right, I will. Thank you very much.
The boomers are worse with the texting, and they use a lot more emojis.
All right, so we're gonna come back to that application. Let's move on to Item 10. Is case P2024-0156 is a conditional use at 545 Newark Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening, counsel.
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I am Edward Maynard, of the Law Firm of Maynard and Maynard. I represent the applicant, KindBuds JC LLC, expecting an application to open a retail cannabis store at 554 Newark Avenue. This will be an approximately 1,400 square foot retail facility with no consumption area in a four-story building formerly occupied by Law Office Apartments above on a configuration very common for buildings in this area of the city. I'm sure you're, you're quite familiar with it. Recognizing the board has a crowded agenda tonight, I'll, I'll try and keep my remarks brief and the testimony of my clients brief, but don't, don't hesitate to ask us to explore any issue that concerns you in whatever depth you prefer. I have two witnesses this evening. I have Michael Daniels, who's the principal of the, and sole owner of the LLC. That will be the owner of the establishment, and his architect, Eric Leipens, to contestify as to the technical issues. This is an application for conditional use approval. No variances are sought. All conditions of the conditional use are met, and so I think it's a pretty straightforward application. Unless the board has anything first, I'd like to call Mr. Daniels.
Sure.
Mr. Daniels, step up, please.
Good evening, board.
Mr. Daniels, good evening.
Do you swear in testimony at the next meeting? The whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Michael Daniel, M.I.C.H.A.E.L., last name Daniel, D.A.N.I.E.L.
Mr. Daniel, before we go on, counsel, we do need notice from you. Do you have your notice with you?
Yes, it's been, it's been uploaded to Tyler. I have the originals here if you require them.
Counsel, we do take the originals. I did see that you had it uploaded to Tyler, but...
You have the proof of service, the original post receipt, and the original affidavit of publication.
Thank you. Just give us one second.
Chairman, I'm going to receive the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application at 545 Newark Avenue. It does appear to see the same, or the original of the notice that was uploaded to the Tyler portal. It does appear to be in order. You're gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel, would you give the, tell the board your relationship to the applicant, KindBuds JC LLC?
I am the sole owner of KindBuds LLC. I'm a Jersey City resident. I went to Dickerson High School. I own other businesses in Jersey City. I grew up in the area, about two or three blocks away from the proposed location.
You've lived in Jersey City all your life?
Yes, I have.
You love the city, don't you?
Yes, sure do.
Can you tell the board what it is you're proposing to do at 545 Newark Avenue?
I am proposing a Class 5 cannabis retail application. Retail dispensary at that location.
Similar to any other dispensary?
Right, to any other dispensary.
That's been opened already in the city?
Correct.
Okay. Would there be a consumption area?
No, no consumption.
Okay. What is it about this location that makes it particularly attractive to you?
I grew up there. I grew up there. I went, like I mentioned, I went to school down the block. There's tons of redevelopment going on there, tons of new buildings, a new courthouse, as you guys know. I think it's just a perfect place. It's home.
Do you own any other businesses in town?
I own a cafe, Blends Cafe. It's over on Mallory Avenue. I've been there five years now. I also own another location, a convenience store and event space over on, in Stadium Plaza in Jersey City.
All right. Now, you're aware that the state regulates these facilities quite carefully. There are innumerable, innumerable regulations. It's, it's your intention to operate in strict compliance with all those regulations?
Absolutely.
Could you explain to the board, there were certain things that the planner's review asked us to touch upon. Can you talk about the method of trash disposal, trash disposal from the facility?
Well, trash can't be disposed, just, well, cannabis disposal, cannabis trash can't be disposed with other trash unless it's shredded, and it also has to be, it has to be, you have to make notice to, to the state, letting you know what the amount of cannabis waste that you plan on disposing of, and it can either be mixed in, but it also, when it is, when it is disposed of, it has to be somewhere where it can't be accessible to anybody, anyone else.
So there'll be a secure area in the store?
Of course.
And will the cannabis waste be kept in the secure area?
Of course.
Okay, and most of the garbage that goes out from the facility would probably consist of what?
Lunch, employee lunch, would be most of it.
And, and what are you gonna do with that?
That'd be put in a, in a regular garbage bin, and it could be rolled out into the front of, front of the, the location on, you know, to be picked up by, by the city's...
Just regular street pickup, right?
Yeah.
When it's not a pickup day, where's it gonna be kept?
We have it in the back of the store, locked away. It's also gonna be fenced, fenced in.
Okay, the fence is gonna be around that, where's it gonna be?
It's gonna be in the back of the store.
Okay.
Outside.
Okay, thank you. You want to give the board a brief overview of the security that's gonna be installed at the facility?
So our security plan was approved by the Jersey, by the Jersey City Police. It's one of the requirements for the cannabis board. It was done by the Sapphire Risk Group, which is like the gold standard when it comes to these security plans. It consists of having security guards, multi-lock doors, thermal cameras, lighting. That's pretty much most of it. That's mostly, yeah, that's pretty much.
Or it has any questions they'll be sure to ask. And can you explain the signage that you propose to install outside of the store?
The signage is very simple. We already have an awning. We just plan on putting our logo up there.
Logo, is it gonna be a logo, or is it just gonna be lettering?
Just lettering, like our KindBuds JC.
And there's, there's a depiction of it in the, in the plans that are on file?
Correct.
Thank you. I don't have anything further for, for Mr. Daniel.
Okay.
Available to the board.
All right, thank you. I have nothing for Mr. Daniel. Anybody else?
You gonna have an architect come up, or he's the only one testifying?
No, we have an architect.
Okay. I just, I'm getting mixed up. I look a little further, but you're on the same block as the courthouse? What block are you on?
Newark Ave.
Yeah, I know you're on Newark Ave.
Right.
The old courthouse.
Right, I'm closer to the old courthouse, yes.
You're closer to it, right?
To the old courthouse, yeah.
I always thought the old courthouse was 545, and I'm saying this guy's gonna put a cannabis. I grew up in Jersey City, and I'm thinking, isn't it 545, the old courthouse, the new courthouse? Well, what's considered the old one, the higher building, not the real old courthouse. So you're on the, you're not on the same block, you're either to the left or closer, are you closer to Dickerson High School?
Closer to Dickerson High School.
Closer to Dickerson High School, but you're still the 200 feet away from...
600 feet, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Next question will be to the architect.
Running courthouse is 583, the old apartment building's 595.
I always think it was the tall building, I thought...
595.
595?
Yeah.
Okay. That was a pretty cool. My bible probation.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead, counsel.
Chairman, for the record, there is the Cannabis Control Board Resolution in the package.
Yes.
From, it looks like November of 2023.
So, Mr. Lampy, in the package that we filed, our, there are numerous documents required by the ordinance. I could go through, and I did that in my submission. I didn't see a need to spend time on it tonight, but each and every requirement of that ordinance is met with the exhibit as applicable. It's all, it's all in the application packet.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Yes. Sure, it's Eric, E.R.I.K., last name Leipens, L.I.E.P.I.N.S.
Mr. Leipens, good evening. I don't believe we've qualified you in the past, have we?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay, if you could just run through your qualifications, your licensing, what state you're licensed in, all that stuff.
Sure. So I'm the principal owner, principal architect and owner of Zelta Design with my principal office address at 139 Chestnut Street in Nutley, New Jersey. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, and my license is active and in good standing. And I've done numerous projects throughout Jersey City, but not in front of this board yet.
Okay. And you were the, the principal architect on this project?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You got it.
Mr. Leipens, would you describe, give the board an overview of this project, please?
Sure. So it's really, for the most part, an interior renovation of a 1,000, just shy of a 1,400 square foot ground floor commercial space. So you walk in, and there's, there's a lobby area with a reception desk, and then there's another door which leads you into the retail area. So you have to first check in, and then you lead to the retail area, which is where the transactions occur. And then in the back, there is an existing restroom, which is proposed to remain. But mainly, it's a cosmetic upgrade with the new awning being re, or the existing awning being reskinned on the outside of the building.
Thank you. Would you, the planning report asked us to address the issues of odor control. First of all, do you see in these uses any need for odor control?
I don't. So there's no consumption happening here on site, so everything that is on-site and sold, and that leaves a premises, is sealed.
Would any odor control measures be installed nevertheless?
There will be charcoal filters and, you know, an exhaust fan, but I don't see any odors from this facility occurring.
Okay, and is there any equipment that would generate noise outside of the facility proposed to be installed?
Just your standard air conditioning through-wall system, which is consistent with what the upper-floor apartments have, so no real addition of noise than what's currently there.
And does this application comply with all the requirements of the Jersey City ordinance?
Yes, it does.
There aren't any variances necessarily you're aware of?
No.
I don't have any further questions for this witness.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody, any questions? Eddie, I know you have one.
No, my, my question, but as I'm looking at it more, I just noticed that the, the bathroom in this facility, because a lot of the facilities that's just taken out, it's accessible to the public, right? This bathroom?
Once you get into the retail space.
Yeah, you're in the retail space, and then you have the door that goes in. There's that existing room that has three doors, one to the bathroom, it's in and out.
Right.
Which is a very small room. That's like a little closet space, or...
Correct.
That's what that is?
Yeah.
So nothing's gonna be stored in that little space as far as...
No cannabis, yeah.
No cannabis being stored in there. It's just a, for some reason, a little passage.
Correct.
That one, from one room to another. Okay, and, all right, that's what you me up, because sometimes these facilities don't provide, I don't see access to the bathroom for the clients.
Correct.
It's only for the workers. That's when you have it the other way around. One more thing is your exit and entrance, so the exit for the facility is actually just a corridor for the entrance, too. There'll be going through that one. You're not gonna add another door in that area, are you?
The only entry and exit for customers is on Newark Avenue. There is a rear door, but that's for employees only, where the trash would be taken out, you know, that kind.
Okay. That's all I have, Chairman.
All right, thanks, Eddie. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, doctor.
What kind of lighting you have outside with the signage?
Sure. So the signage is a, is a canvas awning, so that's non-illuminated. There are security lights on the side of the building, which just illuminate from the first floor down, and that's all that's there.
And when does the light goes off? Is it after, like, business hours? It's on or it's off?
I would have to defer to the operator for that one. I'm not, I'm not sure.
We'll call them back and ask, and that.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, any other questions for the architect?
No. No.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you want to call Mr. Daniel again?
Daniel, would you answer, Mr. Josai's a question about lighting hours?
So, so the lighting, the lighting, what it does, it turns on after, when the sun's like a, a, what is it called?
It's dawn?
No. It's like a sensor, it's a sensor. No, um, it's like a sensor, it's a sensor light. So, and it's adjacent to the building, so nothing flo- not, the lighting doesn't go into any, any other premises, any other facility, just on our facility. So, uh, for a security standpoint thing, if, let's say somebody was trying to walk in on the premises, the lights will go off. But during the day, there's no, there's no lighting there, yeah.
Okay, but there's no exterior lighting, say after hours, except for that sensor?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing that would be in, you know, in, interrupting or, um, going into anybody else's building.
Okay.
And it's a photo cell, is that the word you were trying to think of?
Yes.
Doctor, is that, does that answer your question? Okay, anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
I have nothing else. I think it's a perfectly conforming application. Again, we could stay, stay all night and some boards want to hear about these things all night. I don't think that's your interest, but, um. Yes, so we, uh, submit that the application is ripe for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Uh, is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Chair, see no one from public. I wish to close the public portion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. And I have no idea whose application this is.
I'm, I'm, I'm stepping in for this one. This is actually, um, inherited this from Francisco.
Oh, that's right.
Um, I've reviewed the documents, uh, that were submitted to the plan, or to the, to the portal. Um, as well as the, uh, the staff memo prepared by, uh, Francisco dated December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Um, as well as the, uh, the map that was prepared. Uh, there, we did do a check. This location is permissible for, uh, class five cannabis retailer, uh, conditional use. It was submitted to, uh, city planning ahead of any other permits being approved for a nearby retailer, which there is one, uh, on Newark Avenue. Uh, they do meet all the conditions of the conditional use. Uh, in our staff memo, we do recommend, uh, six conditions should the board make a motion to approve. I would just ask if the council had, has reviewed those conditions and if they would, uh, would agree to those conditions. Um, Edward? Um, sorry, that, were you, did you have time to review the conditions in the staff memo?
So. I'm sorry. Old age.
Not a problem.
I used to be able to read. Okay, following conditions, one, all materials and color selection shall be as shown on the final plans, yes. Um, no change to the facade and site design, including materials, as well as any changes that may be required by the Office of Construction Code, shall be permitted without consultation and approval by planning staff, of course. Number two, all testimony given by the applicant and their expert witnesses in accordance with this application shall be binding. That's understood. Our people are under oath and they understand that. Number three, prior to the issuance of any permit, the applicant shall seek and receive approval by the Cannabis Control Board and Cannabis Regulatory Commission. I know we have C C B approval. I think C R C comes after, after the planning board. So we, we obviously can't open, under state law, we can't open until we obtain that. It's a perfectly appropriate condition. Number four, Architective Record shall provide an affidavit confirming the development is built according to the approved plans prior to the issuance of the first C O.
Uh, five, we can actually forego, uh, commissioners, um, so we can just skip to six.
Okay, number six is the applicant will comply with all conditions of approval set forth on the record by the planning board and or city, uh, division of city planning staff. Of course you will.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. So I entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two four dash zero one five six as presented to the board this evening together with staff recommendation and conditions. Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, and a motion approved, Acting Chair Gangen?
Aye.
Councilman Prinzari?
Michael, I wish you best of luck. It's great to see you continue to invest with your businesses here in Jersey City. I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Uh, Mr. Daniels, I didn't catch what high school you went to, uh? Dickerson High School, cool. I was at the better one, fellas, but, um. This is what, when they first started cannabis in Jersey City, this is what I was always hoping for. This is what I hope for in my neighborhood now in Ocean Avenue in Greenville. Somebody from the neighborhood. When you said, why am I putting it there? It's because I'm from that neighborhood. Put, great answer. I've been waiting for that answer for years as people come in from other states and stuff to establish a business here. Brother, I wish you a lot of luck. I hope you're the best on it. I hope you a lot of success. And that I appreciate that you're here. It's still in Jersey City. With that, I vote a big aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Congratulations, aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Chairman Lex?
Eddie took my, uh, my whole speech. So congratulations, wish you the best of luck, uh, same, um, you know, every night we hear these things and, and it's so nice to hear somebody from the neighborhood that's, that's giving it a shot. So best of luck. I hope you make it. Uh, obviously an aye for me.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, let's move on to item eleven. It's case P two zero two four dash zero one four nine is a preliminary and final major site plan and conditional use for five twenty-three Tunnelly Avenue. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, um, David Singer from the law firm of Porzio, Bronberg and Newman on behalf of the applicant. Um, before we get started, I want to mark, um, the affidavit of publication and service as a one.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, I'm, I'm here on behalf of Grass House LLC, um, which is block three two oh three, lot seven, eight and nine. We are here, uh, for site plan and conditional use approval for a commercial tenant where all conditions have been met for a class five cannabis retailer at an existing ground floor retail space with associated signage in the H C Highway Commercial Zone under Jersey City ordinance. Uh, I understand that the agenda is long, so I'm gonna be as brief and succinct as I can. This is an application on behalf of an applicant that meets the rationale for the use, namely, social equity for a person with long ties to the community here in Jersey City. The applicant proposes to improve a parcel by demol- uh, demolishing a one-story mason rebuilding, abutting the existing two-story wood frame building, which will then be improved to house the retail cannabis establishment. Parking will be reconstructed and restripped and the site will be further improved with associated landscaping improvements. Tonight, uh, you will hear testimony from the applicant's civil engineer, Guy Lego Marcino regarding the present condition of the property and the proposed site improvements. You'll also hear testimony from the applicant's architect, Ronald Elkins, who will take you through the floor plans and some operational details about the application. We also have, uh, with us the traffic engineer, Connor Hughes from Dynamic Traffic, if the board so chooses to, um, hear testimony, uh, from Mr. Hughes. Uh, and, um, we have a representative from the applicant, uh, Michael Price, who is here, uh, to answer any questions that the board may have of him as well. This application has received, um, Jersey City C C B approval already. With that, I'd like to call up my first, uh, witness, um, Guy Lego Marcino.
Hello?
There you are. You're behind me.
The setup. Are they gonna get me on here or? Where am I? Um. Okay. Yes, I do. Guy Lager Marcino, L A G O M A R S I N O.
Uh, could you please provide the board with your education area expertise and licenses you've held?
Yes.
That's okay, sir. We've qualified you a million times. Uh, your license is current tonight, though?
Yes, huh?
Your license is current tonight.
Yeah, but it's still current.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified, yes.
Okay.
Can you, uh, go through the site plans for the board, please?
Yes, I do. Well, say well. So, uh, this site has been pretty much dilapidated for many years and it's definitely a corner which definitely would definitely need a major upgrade even to, for any type of commercial space. And I want to look and talk about what we're doing to upgrade the site and to make it aesthetically pleasing, uh, for, for all, uh, in the neighborhood as well as, uh, the, the, the use that's gonna be used for it. It's a corner that is a difficult corner, uh, which is high volume and traffic, as many of you know, uh, that to be during, uh, uh, peak times. But, um, I'm here for that. I'm here for what we're doing with the site itself, uh, with the upgrades. There is really the utilities here, because I've known, I've been here before, um, issues with, uh, pumps and, and drainage systems. So, uh, being from a civil perspective, uh, there is no sanitary line at this corner. Uh, and I think that's pretty much why I'm drawing this up here, that we're showing that we're shipping, uh, if you can see this, uh, the line here, these two lines here. Uh, before we even get into the, really what's going on inside the building, which I'll leave for the architect, but the sanitary right now even, uh, is, is being, uh, was a septic system that was already converted to a pump system down, which is down by the railroad. So, and so upgrading the site, we're gonna have, uh, the rotor runoff going to a detention system, which then is collected. Nothing is gonna seep back into the ground, cause the ground is sus- suspect even this whole neighborhood, so we're gonna keep, keep the water, retain it and, and like, you know, let, uh, offices that would allow the water to seep out slowly to down, um, that's the first thing. So, so we're already gonna take care of all the requirements for the water retention. The next thing is now we're gonna have an opening, a new road here. Let me get back to, uh, the other one, which is, um. Now my site plan. Um. Which is this one here? So let's go to the site plan. Uh, there is gonna be the new opening on the Tunnelly Avenue side, which you'll be able to enter from that side. Right now, they're entering more or less. If you, you can't get to that side from here. You're gonna be turning into that and it's gonna be more, uh, open. That it is, uh, be our loud, loud traffic coming southbound on Tunnelly Avenue to have access and as well from County Road. And right now, it's, County Road is there, but we're gonna obviously upgrade that whole corner with concrete. And actually, we have ten trees, maple trees going in, as well as a few, uh, shrubs. Uh, so it's a, it's, you know, for the landscaping part, uh, we're really upgrading this whole corner from, uh, from the state that it's in right now. We have over ten, uh, believe we have over seventeen parking spaces and as well as, as well as, um, a truck lane, which should be able to maneuver inside, uh, the area that will be able to, um, get and unload and for the establishment. As far as the sanitary, uh, we, as you see in the corner there after number seventeen, uh, I'm sorry, not sanitary, the trash. The trash would be, uh, in a trash bin, uh, away from the building. And obviously, there is nothing in that area that would be, uh, would be would be detrimental to the neighborhood, because we're gonna actually have shrubs to the, uh, west of it as well as grassed area that will not really be a major, uh, you know, detrimental to, if there are to build next to the west of it. Um, as far as, um, I just wanted one more point with the lighting. Um, the lighting is all new lighting on, uh, on, right now, I think there's just some real heavy duty lights, uh, just strobes on it. But we're gonna definitely use, uh, uh, light LEDs all over the parking lot that will allow to establish as well, even on the sidewalk. That if there's anyone walking to the establishment, not to the establishment, they'll actually have lighting fixtures as well. I think that should cover most of my testimony as far as, um, as far as the site itself is concerned.
Can you show the board where, where demolishing the?
Yeah, I think the, the architect has those plans. He, that he was, we talked about it before that he'll be, uh, touching on that.
Is the new curb cut approved by, uh, D O T?
Right now, he's already, we're already putting in, uh, an application for them. You know, they take a lot of time to do that. As far as the county as well, uh, uh, we, all these applications are in the process. And as well as anything, we're gonna adhere to, I think that J C M U A has already reviewed some of, uh, we have comments from there. We're gonna discuss with them the options, uh, of what they're asking from us, uh, certain things we, I think I'll speak to Rich about, uh, at the J C M U A in regards of, we're not agreeing with some of their perspective of what they were asking for, but I don't think we're gonna be in adherence to the J C M U A requirements.
I'm sorry, you say the last part?
We're gonna be in adherence to the requirements, but right now, based upon the, the review, the initial review, they had made comments that necessary, that, you know, as far as they, they, they requested more greenery on the building. And I think that's maybe something that the architect would discuss, that we're, we're not at a standstill. I think we're more or less at an impasse that we're gonna try to get to a conclusion of this. We will be able to provide for them if they want in the end, uh, giving them what they want. But I, I don't think within the criterias of the code, we'll be able to stick with what the original plan is, that it's not going to be modified. That whatever they've asked for is not gonna be a major modification. It's just, it's just that I don't think that it's, it's necessary. That's, so that's where we're at right now.
So counsel, we have the Jersey City M U A letter from December third, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
You have a copy of that?
Yeah, we have the copy of that. We have the copy of that. And we've already been trying in discussion with them, but we wanted to come before the meeting here.
Well, point one says what you're proposing is not acceptable.
That's correct. That's proposing that, in the sense of, of drainage.
You've proposed something. Point one in the December third M U A letter says what you proposed is not acceptable.
That's correct.
Have we been discussing with the M U A how to get around that?
We have, but then they asked us about getting approvals from the D O T and that's from December. And so now we're in the, with the D O T trying to get some approvals there as well. So if they're waiting for the approvals with the curb cuts, that's, 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 uh, that can take time.
That's not what number one is about.
Okay, but.
Right?
Refresh me, I wonder, I don't have number one in front of me, so. I could pull that up somewhere, but if you have it, if.
So number one is the proposed two-inch H D P E pressurized storm line shown on sheet S E dash one oh one.
That's the one I showed before, yes.
Connecting to the existing two-inch pipe in County Road is not acceptable.
That's correct. So the two things, since the site is large enough, we can do seepage into the site. We have no problem with that. And we spoke that to, to, I think it was, who was we, which name was that, uh, Bajiv? Uh, so, so what I'm saying is that we have spoken, but since we already have a two-inch sanitary line that is pumped, that's been agreed and we already worked with that, there's a two-inch sanitary there now that's pumped out of there, that I designed maybe with Guarini, uh, with Guarini. We installed it years ago, maybe like fifteen years ago. So they're now looking to do the pump, because they feeling that that might be, there could be a backup. So either way, we can do a, so doesn't impact the site, whether we're gonna have a half pipe or a full pipe. We just need to do a perk test and find it, because the site is large enough that we can seep into the ground. So that's the only thing that I think that.
I wouldn't agree that it doesn't affect the site. So, I just don't agree with that statement. The comment speaks for itself.
Well, you have eleven thousand square feet almost, uh, uh, of, of land and you have a lot of open, uh, asphalt area.
What makes you not upgrade the pipe now, though? If it's, this is not acceptable, they're telling you, why wouldn't you? We've had this conversation with you before.
Yeah, before.
This is not the first time you're bringing the same conversation back on a different site.
A different site, yes.
Yeah. Now that I'm listening to you, this conversation came before.
Yes.
Same life size and everything.
What makes you think it works this time?
We still have, we, we settled with, uh, uh.
Oh, I don't know about that part. Let's, let's skip, let's skip the other sites. We don't need to talk about that. What I'm just saying is.
Storm detention with pumps on their last side.
Sir, nobody's saying that we can't resolve the issue. What we're saying is, this is a comment in an M U A letter from December. It's the end of February. It's not acceptable what you proposed. You're saying that you have other possible solutions to the problem. But that belongs at the M U A. They haven't accepted or seen these other possible solutions. Point of talking about the history between this board. The point of talking about the history between this board and you, along with the MUA, is we've gone through this dance before, and you had to go to the MUA and get their approval for us to move forward.
That is correct.
So.
This would be the third time in my career.
Right.
Counsel, I think you see where we're going here.
That you even willing to wait to the very end of the project being built and done and everything to address this issue.
The situation here.
And you're bringing that up to this board. That that is like, for working, I work in the construction field. That sounds crazy.
Let's let's not understand the site the way it is. We got 11,000 square feet, 11,000 square feet of site in itself. There there is no doubt, we can use the seepage of the soil if we need to, to take care of that. We don't need to go to any pumping, any system in the drain. So there we have too, we have too much site.
We we vote on what's in front of us.
Yes, I understand.
You know, whatever you're proposing to us tonight isn't acceptable to the MUA.
That's correct. That's.
So that's not acceptable to us.
All right.
If we would ask if the board be willing to have that as a condition to any approval that might come before the board.
I think we'd need to say it. We need some kind of comment letter back from the MUA. We we need something that's acceptable to the MUA before we.
The last two projects, we went to the MUA, we were able to get a letter that we we were able to condone that they approved this. I agree.
So respectfully, I don't know why we don't have that letter yet.
I know, it's a different application.
But we know it's a problem.
Yeah.
You have multiple solutions in your toolbox.
Yes.
You need to present those to the MUA and settle on the one that they accept and present that to us. The only other comment that I have at this time is, I don't know if anyone's going to talk about turnplates and and width and the DOT permit is pending. When was that filed?
Well, we submitted them and we're still under review before we have the official submittal, because we have other, there's a traffic engineer too also, so there's multiple.
We submitted for the DOT permit or we are reviewing?
Because we have the DOT, in order to do this, you need MPT, traffic control, and all those other things. You can't submit without having that.
And then you got to go to the county as well, because you're between a state highway, obviously, and a county road.
So and the county road as well. So I don't know if that's part of the contingency here, but obviously, it's, I don't think that will impact the site itself, since it's a large site. It's a matter of just maybe moving a tree or the curb cuts. I mean, you have 30 something feet here, 34 feet. I mean, for an opening here, it's more than a big enough width to get in, and then you have 48 feet on County Road, so.
Yeah, I.
You got the turn radius.
I don't know, I don't know what obviously DOT or the county is going to say. But if they tell you no on either one of these.
No, I agree.
We know how that goes.
That was a contingent to come before the board.
Understood, I'm not disputing that. I didn't know if you had it.
I thought it before.
I just didn't know if you had a sense that this is going in the direction you want it to be going, or if, you know, they haven't said anything and we'll we'll wait to see. We'll deal with the turning, but we can't even get past the MUA comments. I don't think.
Yeah, I think.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Ed.
So since you spoke about the storm system, there's two existing builders there that you were demoing, a garage and a building, right? So I'm going to assume, well, I'm not going to assume, I'm going to ask you straight out. You have a solution for the waste in that building?
The waste is going to continue the way it is right now.
Okay, I want it on the record. You have a a a plan for the waste?
The waste is not changed. We were approved by the JCMUA.
Okay.
Guarini installed it.
I just wanted to hear you say it.
All right.
And so, thank you.
That's that's there. So it's the only question of storm.
I think the MUA had some other comments.
Well, counsel, as far as I'm concerned, the the civil plans presented to us tonight aren't acceptable to the MUA. How do we move forward without that being acceptable to the city?
The board, it sounds like the board wouldn't be willing to have that as a condition to approval. So I would say we'd carry this.
Okay.
Application.
Okay. Matt, any thoughts?
I think just having some experience with JCA's, JCMUA's turnaround, perhaps the second meeting in March would be a good date to carry to.
Okay, so counsel, we're going to carry you to March 25. And we're going to preserve that notice. Actually, notice is already in, so.
Do you need three notice?
No. So we'll we'll continue this application with testimony taken already.
Great.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for to carry to March 25, date certain.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to carry case P 2024 dash 0149, just date certain March 25, 2025, with preservation of notice.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to carry. Could we have a roll call, please?
Acting Chair Gangadin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Franzari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Chairman Lex?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. All right, let's move on to. Mr. McDonough, how do you feel? Want to jump right into this?
I'm ready.
All right, let's do it. So let's let's call item nine back is case P 2025 dash 0037. This is the review and discussion to permit a billboard use in the Chapel Avenue Industrial Park redevelopment plan. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, Robert Kavanaugh again, Waters McFirst, McNeil for the applicant Pacific Outdoor Advertising. Mr. McDonough, do you want to go through his qualifications again?
Your license is current tonight, Mr. McDonough?
Yes, it is.
You're fine, you're qualified.
I was going to ask him, okay. Yep.
I have that effect, right? Yes, I do. Sure. Hi, everyone, John McDonough, MC Capital, D O N O U G H, and I'm the applicant planner.
John.
Mr. McDonough, we can hear you, but can we get Mr. McDonough a mic of some sort? Cordless one? You have to turn it on.
Mr. McDonough, can you please provide the board with a description of the requested amendment and provide testimony as to the consistency with the plan?
Sure, this is a pretty simple, straightforward request to add one additional use to the Chapel Avenue Industrial Park redevelopment plan, particular to lands that abut the New Jersey Turnpike Extension. This will essentially affect a single piece of property that is slender in shape. It's pencil thin and has limited utility for other permitted uses in the zone. What the petition is, is to add a billboard for permitted principal use to your list of principal uses in in the zone. Again, with the usual caveats, that this would be subject to all the outdoor advertising regulations and specific only to lands that abut the Turnpike Extension. So this is the only place in the entire redevelopment plan where this would happen. We think it serves a positive utility on a land that has limited utility, given it's a very, very narrow shape. And these are lands that are immediately adjacent to MUA property, so this could provide a nice public service, public service announcement. The benefit of this particular land use is that it does provide real time messaging in digital display. So in collaboration with the city, in collaboration with the MUA, we can provide real time messaging as part of this land uses function. That's that's the essence of what the applicant is asking, the petitioner is asking the board to move on.
Commissioner McDonough, we just need a little bit on consistency, obviously, with the master plan and with the redevelopment plan itself.
Sure, again, the essence of the redevelopment plan is to promote commerce, economic development. Given the constraints of this land and its former association with a rail line, it does have limited utility. So this will take unproductive, underutilized land and put it into functional use. I think that's right on point with the master plan goal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonough. Any questions, anyone? All right, thank you. Thanks for coming all the way over here.
Sorry to mess up your flow.
No worries. Tanya, do you have anything?
Yes.
Do you want me to open it up for public first, or do you want to? Okay, is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from public?
Chair, see no one from public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made, seconded, and public is closed. Tanya?
So I just have a few recommendations just for consistency with how the rest of our plans read. If you see Mr. McDonough's memo, under G9, I'd ask for it to be removed since we don't reference devariances in our redevelopment plans, since Jersey City does not do devariances in redevelopment plans. And then on 10, which will then be 9, everything after without requiring really for the devariance, which is again, just a repeat that we don't like to have that devariance language in our redevelopment plans. We have no problem with two principal uses on the lot. And then number two, and this is where it gets a little tricky, because the site that the petitioner and eventually applicant will be building on is split zoned. And some of it is in port industrial and some of it is in redevelopment. So once this use is permitted, we have a standard in our code that says if the majority of the lot is that zone, then that whole lot becomes zoned for that. That deals with any kind of split lot zoning. And my only concern with number two is that we don't have any official formal designation for the remainder of this site. So I don't know if we can just kind of go ahead and put it in redevelopment without going through that process. But because it's split zone and the majority of it will be within the redevelopment, the billboard use will be permitted should the board approve it. And then as Mr. Torres was reminding me, and Mr. McDonough and I have had this billboard dance for at least the last 10 years. The master plan in 2000 did have language verbiage about protecting the scenic corridor, and which is why we haven't had billboards along specifically 78 in the entire time. The last master plan did not include that language any longer, and instead included language asking us to take into consideration where these billboards would be appropriate. And instead of just having an outright prohibition on it, to look at it a little bit more critically. And so that, I think, is addressing what this is. And however the board feels comfortable with this, and how counsel you feel comfortable with it, is I would like it if there was, this would be the only billboard within the Chapel Industrial Plan. And I don't know if that becomes an issue for economic competition or whatever. But if that's possible, it would be, no, okay, no. Shaking his head, no. There there are NJ DOT standards for distancing requirements, but yeah. Okay, and so that that is a, that's my comments. I recommend approval with those changes and actually recommend referral to the city council with approval from the planning board.
Okay, thank you, Tanya. Eddie, you have something?
Well, I feel like there's lack of information here on why we didn't have billboards and what kind of, what is, this billboard is going to be used for public information or advertisement purposes? Both.
Both. But the what the applicant or the petitioner is saying to the board and to the city is it's going to be an advertising billboard, of course, but it's going to also be available to the city and the JCMUA for any kind of public service announcement they have. In fact, when I spoke to the owner today, he told me that if there was, even if he had full, a full contract for for use of the billboard by, say, a third party, that if there was an emergency that came up, that the city needed to put something on that billboard, his contracts with anybody that's using the billboard would allow that that city emergency would take precedent over what goes up on that billboard.
So Mr. Dunn said that it was going to be for public notice when he made his, in his comment just now.
Right, it's going to allow for both.
But the truth of the matter is, it's basically mostly used for advertisement purposes.
Right, but the, but.
If there's an emergency.
But not only just if there's an emergency, he is going to, the client, when I spoke to him, and and, you know, I'm relaying what what he's told me specifically more than once, that the the city and the MUA will have access to this billboard to put our public service announcements. You know, there'll probably be some kind of schematical plan that they'd work out with fitting in with the, oops, sorry. Because these things are digital, and we've seen them on the highway, they change and they turn. You'll probably fit more than, you know, I guess it's whatever the, whatever the contracts.
Structure, structure wise, height, what we're going to, what's going to be built there, we don't know how that looks yet.
We're not there yet.
There are standards.
Not there.
Well, right, we're not.
We're not there yet.
We're not on site plan yet.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
But I think there's a couple of things that we want to make clear if we're going to make a positive referral to the council in terms of consistency with the master plan, which is what we're all charged with, right? This is a request to be amended in a redevelopment plan. Only the governing body can do that. This board is familiar with the procedure. We're determining whether or not it's consistent with the master plan. We heard director go through exactly what the conversation regarding billboards and commercial digital billboards has been within the city. I think it's possible that there are other constraints that are put on the site within an amendment that maybe will help. But that's a city governing body question when it gets there. Terms of consistency, I think it sounds like, based on Mr. McDonough's testimony, along with the director's testimony, the idea of a digital billboard for commercial purposes is consistent with the master plan along this corridor and specifically within this redevelopment zone. So that's really the question. I think that's what the board has to determine. The testimony of the two planners is in favor of it being found to be consistent. But there's nothing that says that when we send the transcript, we can't say to the governing body, here's what our general concerns are. We are concerned about how high the billboard is going to be. We are concerned about the distance of the billboard. They're highly regulated, so the DOT really regulates the distance between getting the permit and things of that nature. There's there's a good amount of criteria that has to be met or or dealt with. Messaging on billboards, whole different ball of wax, that's First Amendment stuff, well beyond our concern here at at this board. So with that, I agree in terms of not wanting to permit any type of a devariance in a redevelopment plan. I think the purpose of the dual use language, as I'm understanding it, is just to be clear that in this redevelopment plan, we would permit two principal uses on a site if one of those principal uses is a billboard. That's the way I read it, that's the way I interpret, and that's the way I would recommend it to the governing body if I was going to actually write anything in terms of the.
I agree. John McDonough?
John McDonough agrees with Sancho the Lampy. There's nothing more to do tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, as far as as what's in front of us tonight, we're just deciding on consistency with the master plan. But yeah, there's some concerns that I think Tanya has brought up tonight that should go forward to city council. So with that said, I'm comfortable going forward with the motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2024 dash.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0037, which is approve billboard use in the Chapel Avenue Industrial Park redevelopment plan and forward to city council for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded for adoption, I'm sorry, being forwarded to city council with a positive recommendation.
Of consistent with the master plan, with the comments incorporated by the panel.
Acting Vice Chair, Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman, Pranjeri.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Counselor, thanks for clearing that up on that issue there, because I was on this board when we was asked to take billboards off of certain parts of the city. And not being clear as the years pass by, but I agree, part of the master plan fits into that section, you know? I always think that sometimes these things start a precedence of happening in other places as it goes along, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. With that, I could see this be a part fitting into the master plan with the plan of staff. I'll agree and I'll vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Drasai.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I agree that it's consistent with the goals and objectives of the master plan, and I think it should get a positive recommendation to city council, but as we discussed tonight, I think there's some clearing up that has to happen before it gets adopted, and I hope they take that into consideration, but my vote is aye.
Motion carries all in favor to recommend to city council with a positive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Mike, do you want to get a break in now?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Let's take a 10-minute break, everybody. It's 6:51. We'll be back in 10. And let's call item 12 on the agenda is case P2024-0124 is a preliminary and final major site plan for 538 Palisades Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. Stephen Joseph for the applicant. This is a notice application, or a notice package here. We'll mark this as A1.
Thank you, counsel. Chairman R.C., the affidavit and oath proof of publication for 534-538 Palisades Avenue here in the city. Had the opportunity to review it. It does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
All right. Thank you, counsel. And Mr. Joseph, I got to tell you, as somebody that doesn't have hair, the haircut's offensive. Why would you cut that hair?
I apologize. I will talk to my barber about this and you will...
No, it looks good, but...
We didn't recognize you at first. I'm sorry. It'll all come back, I promise. Give me a couple of months.
I know, and that's what's offensive to me.
I said the same thing years ago.
So this is a fairly simple project, five-story building, 11 units, commercial space ground floor, also parking, no variances, preliminary and final major site plan approval. We have an engineer available, should you require testimony, but we're just going to present architectural unless there's any questions. So let's bring up Anthony, get him sworn in, and we'll try to get through this quickly.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
I do. Absolutely. Anthony C. Vandemarck Jr., V.A.N. and D.E.R.M.A.R.K.
Mr. Vandemarck, good evening. We've qualified you numerous times. Your license is current tonight?
Good evening, Chair. Yes, my license is still current.
Okay. Thank you. You're qualified.
All right. And we'll just mark the presentation set as A2. Everything's in the plans, with the exception, I think, of the rendering, but it's just easier presentation. How many slides is this, Anthony?
I'll be presenting 14 slides.
What is 16 slides?
It's 16 slides in the deck. I don't think I need the back two, only with questions.
Let's call it the 16 and just send it over to planning.
Sounds good.
All right. Take it away.
All right. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Joseph had previously stated, we are proposing an as-of-right application here. This is 534, 536, and 538 Palisades. Just to briefly show you where we are, we are approximately mid-block on the eastern side of the street, in between South Street and Bowers Street. We have approximately 74 feet of frontage with 100 feet of lot depth facing the east. Total lot area is at 7,402 square feet. Pre-existing condition, let's go slide number two, top left-hand corner. We have three, you know, two- and three-story wood frame structures, two families and three families that are setback off of the property line. They're adjacent to some greater lot coverage to the north and some similar structures to the south. Bottom right-hand corner, again, slide number seven, front facades of the three buildings to be demolished. The application you have before you this evening has a fully compliant building that's going to bring the project forward to the front property line, kind of, you know, in compliance with the buildings that are directly to the north. 540 is a couple of feet setback, but then you have 542, which is that taller three-story masonry building, at slide number six. This project is in the RC2 district. Again, as of right, this permits a five-story, a 55-foot-tall building with certain setbacks. We are providing all setbacks in compliance with the RC2. We're providing 11 units, although the density calculation of the RC2 permits 13. I'll show you the next couple of slides that these units are a little bit of the larger size. The RC2 is very generous in building volume, and we took advantage of that. We have units that range between 1,329 square feet and all the way to 1,890 in square feet, and they range from two, three, and four bedrooms. We are proposing 11 parking spaces here. Two of them meet the EV or the electric vehicle charging stations that is compliant with the state mandate. We are proposing a 2,010-square-foot retail space. Top floor of that is at 805 square feet, and then we have a storage below with the remainder of the balance. Looking at the site plan, working from the sidewalk line in, we are proposing three new street trees, all-new curbing, all-new sidewalk. We are proposing a 10-foot driveway curb cut, 14 feet to the driveway flares. The principal building height, again, is five stories, that's centrally located. There's a four-story portion that's located 10 feet off the front yard. Again, this is in compliance with the RC2 front yard setbacks for the top floor. The adjacent property to the south has lot line-facing windows. We made light well accommodations for those lot line-facing windows. We have an additional light well here to the north, to the left-hand side of the plan. That's to accommodate an additional bedroom that's in the center of the plan. Proposed lot coverage at the first floor is close to 85%. We have a 15-foot rear yard setback from the first floor, and then a 30-foot rear yard setback at floors 2, 3, 4, and 5. As part of this application, we are proposing landscape rear yards for two of the units. We have an eight-foot roof deck at the first floor above the garage for the second-floor units, and then cantilever balconies, again, at floors 3, 4, and 5, and that's five feet off the back of the building face. This project will have a proposed cellar strictly for utilities and a 1,205-square-foot portion of the retail space that's only going to be used for storage. First floor, again, curb cut, as I previously mentioned. We will have the main entry to the building that will be to the north side of the property, curb cut for the driveway access, and then again, retail space to the southern portion of the property. 11 parking spaces at the first floor, and again, a 15-foot setback to the rear yard with perimeter landscape and privacy screening at the rear yard. We have a unique set of plans here. Because of the building volume that the R2 kind of grants us, we have 11 duplexes here, and we have a unique way of treating these duplexes that each one of these duplexes is going to have a front view and a back view, depending on the level in which you're at, and it also has, each one of these has outdoor space. So just plan left, lower left-hand side would be Unit 3A. Unit 3A, again, is at 1,506 square feet. That crosses over the hallway to the third floor, and facing the rear yard now is the living room area of that unit. So we have a condition where each one of these units crosses the center hallway, and they're color-coded, you know, left front, left back, center, and then so forth on the right. The parking count was taking into consideration of the worst-case scenario is the number of bedrooms, which would be 35. The main living area, which is located here on floor plan number three, or third floor, you have a convertible third bedroom, and that's for ADA compliance, and in need, a handicapped person buys that unit. Going back to the second floor plan, again, an eight-foot roof deck, and each one of those are equally distributed at 176 square feet. With the remaining seven feet of that lower garage roof, we have 385 square feet of extensive green roofing trays. Both ends at the second floor have a non-combustible stair that takes you to a steel stair that takes you down into the rear yard. The center unit does not get rear yard access, only the roof deck outdoor space. Upper floors are very similar, only five in total. The floor plate is diminished to the top floor with a 10-foot setback, but again, five units. Lower left-hand corner crosses over to the rear, so fourth to fifth floor, and then again, right side, back right side, and again, they cross over. Each one of these units has outdoor space. Again, the fourth floor plan in the rear has 114-square-foot cantilever decks, and that's with a five-foot projection. Working your way upward, again, same deck projection off of the rear, but there is a front roof deck of a 10-foot setback there for units left and right, in this case, green Each one of the units on the top floor will have an internal access stair to, again, 245 square foot of roof deck. We are proposing a 1,500-square-foot extensive green roof within the required setbacks of the RC2 zone. Going back to the lower roof, plus the upper roof, the extensive green roofing, we have approximately 1,850 combined extensive green roof, which is the equivalent of 25% lot area, so very generous. We'll have centrally located rooftop condensers. We're thinking split systems. There will be no PTACs in this building facade. Working your way now to the front elevation facing Palisades Avenue. At the base, we have a gray or a warm gray cast stone, followed by ACM at the U shape, which is around the perimeter, a charcoal horizontal banding system at the floor levels, and then we have a white vertical ACM that matches the main feature of the building, which is the U shape around the perimeter. We're proposing a 12-foot-four floor-to-floor height from first to second, and then the remaining floors are consistent at 10-foot-8, second, third, fourth, and fifth. The elevator stops at the top residential floor, therefore, the overrun is only approximately four feet, and the stair bulkheads are at 10 feet above the finished roof system. Any of those stairs that are within proximity of a building perimeter are sloped to minimize the line of sight on these stair bulkheads that service these upper roof decks. Going back to the rendering once again, main residential on the bottom far left, garage door, retail space, and then a second means of egress all the way here to the right-hand side. A wraparound white ACM, white vertical ACMs, and a horizontal charcoal ACM. Building is setback, and again, there's a medium gray ACM, which is an aluminum composite material that matches the base cast stone material. In the rear yard, we will have a cement board panel system that mimics the building language on the front facade. Floor-to-floor heights remain the same as originally testified. Principal roof level is at 55 feet, which is in compliance with the RC2 zone. Building elevation to the south, two light wells for the lot line-facing windows for adjacent neighbor. We are wrapping the ACM cladding around the first 10 feet, because we know that's going to be visible down the long length of Palisades, and then we pick up with a cement vertical, excuse me, horizontal siding at the remainder of the building. Rear yard, again, has the privacy screening, and you can see here that we have the cantilever decks with privacy screening in between the units. North elevation, similar, ACM wraps, and again, horizontal siding, cement board, with the cantilever balconies, and a rear yard screening. Again, as part of the as-of-right application, the building mass is permitted. The buildings that are directly to the north of us are very deep. One of them is even close to 100% lot coverage. Buildings to the south, again, have some setbacks front and back. However, our shadow should be casting over the top of them. So again, as-of-right application, building mass is as-of-right. This concludes my testimony.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vandemarck. Poured concrete or wood frame?
This will be wood frame.
At 10-foot-8? Okay.
They will have a concrete podium at the first floor and then wood trusses above.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Anyone?
The balcony glass that's on the fifth floor? The balcony glass on the fifth floor, where the deck is, is that all the way flush to the bottom, or is there a space in between that part of the...
There's going to be a space in between that glass and the actual elevated deck system.
Elevated deck, right. So it's not a glass that goes all the way flush to the roof?
No, it doesn't.
To the... Okay. So just a consideration of any safety precautions you could use there where people are over that doorway of everybody coming in and out, that nothing gets kicked through that space that's open. I just want to put that in the comment as appreciation to that balcony space, whatever.
Definitely add that, yeah.
Something to think about. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Actually, I don't know if this is appropriate now or not. I was looking at transportation comments as far as the material on the sidewalk, that there's no change in material or grade. There's a section going into the garage where you change the pattern in the sidewalk. Has that been addressed? You want to do it under civil?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll do it. It's a little too much for me to just say so.
Okay. No problem. Anything else from Mr. Vandemarck? Nobody? All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Okay. Let's get you sworn in real quick.
Mr. Joseph says, I assume we'll also deal with the MUA comments regarding major development and...
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
I do.
Mr. Liebeskind, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay. Thank you. You're qualified.
Brian, if you could just tell us a little bit about the transportation comments and the change in grade that was, I believe, chairman's question, and how that's being addressed.
The comment from the Division of Transportation Plan was regarding maintaining a continuous concrete sidewalk across the driveway entry. We can work with the city on a paper ban that delineates that walkway and then... a paper band that delineates the walkway and to not disrupt the, the concrete sidewalk itself. I, I think a delineation of some sort is appropriate for, for pedestrians walking. Understand that there's a driveway there. And, and the front elevation of the building that Mr. Van der Mark went through disguises that, that garage entry well. So it, again, from an engineering standpoint, you know, would prefer to see some type of demarcation.
So, so Brian, we're, we're happy to comply if we have to, but we'd like to work with transportation on not complying with that comment if we can for safety reasons.
Correct.
And there's no grade change, right? I know that the comments talk about a grade change, but there isn't a grade change there, is there?
Correct. After the, the driveway apron, you're flush with the?
Okay, understood. And how about the electrical vehi, the electric vehicle comment?
We will comply with that.
We're going to comply with that.
Okay.
And, and I failed to mention that, you know, always in these garage situations, we do provide a linear LED at the sidewalk level and then also a light at eye level as well for pedestrians. If they're looking down or they're looking up.
Sure.
They have an indicator light there.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
And I, and I think the other question that council raised was there was an initial letter issued by MUA with comments and they later revised that letter changing how the project is being treated from a, from a development in stormwater standpoint. So if you could just maybe say a couple of words on that and confirm we are now complying with the revised MUA letter.
Correct. The site design has been updated to comply with the rules for major development under the stormwater controller and it's and meet the storm reductions associated with this.
And that's been resubmitted to the MUA?
It's been resubmitted, yeah, as, as part of this refiling.
Okay.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Counsel, anything else?
That concludes our direct testimony.
All right, thank you. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Please come on up.
My name is Julio Parilla and J.U.L.I.O.P.A.R.R.I.L.L.A. 532 Palisade Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Good evening, sir, we have three minutes for you.
Well, I have a concern. My wife and I own this two-family home, a lot 13, which is 532, since 2003. The concern that I'm looking at is that the, the way the building is, is just burning up against our home. And we have exhaust ducts there from our vent fans and windows. I know you spoke about the setbacks, but they don't seem to match where our windows are. Looking at our property survey, we have a portion of that alleyway. And I'm concerned if there's something that I need to repair, I'm not going to have any, any space to get to repair it. So I, I have an issue with that.
Okay. How much? First of all, your, your property is on the lot line or you have space in between the lot line and your building?
We have space, it's an alley, personally right now, there's an alley over, over two feet, maybe 30, maybe 29 inches. And I have a portion of that alley, so I'm, I'm able to, you know, to work on my windows or whatever I need to do.
Do we have a site survey? Yeah, could we bring it up?
Okay.
Excuse me, sir.
Sure.
Mr. Van der Mark, if you could just help us with which side of the property this gentleman is on also?
South-sided.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, right now, we're talking about this condition here. The way the survey indicates is that your building is sitting right on the property line and the alleyway is technically on the 534 property of, of 2 foot 2.
Going to my property survey that we had in 2003, I mean, I'm not disputing, I'm just saying that mine's showing something different.
I don't dispute it.
I, I have a copy, I can email to you guys, I didn't think I should print it out if we need to show that.
Can you scroll down, please?
You said you're on the south side?
Yes.
Okay. Lot, lot 13. 13?
Yes, 13, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the one on the right there.
Is this a survey or a portion of a survey? Do we have?
No, this is, this is the actual survey.
I have a question for him.
Yeah, go ahead.
You, you don't have any utilities or anything attached to that side of the building right now?
I have exhaust ducts.
You said a duct?
Yeah, I think the three of them that we have.
It's for your?
From the kitchen.
Oh, and they, and they exhaust out that, that space there?
Yes, they do.
Use your waders.
Yes, and what's going to have to happen is?
Mr. Van der Mark, you got to come up and talk into the microphone.
What's going to have to happen is that those exhaust ducts are going to have to be transferred now vertically. You know, within, you know, probably within our construction envelope on the, on the side yard there, right? Because they, you know, you can't have them blowing directly into the wall and we're not going to inconvenience him with having to do the work himself. So as part of this development, I'm sure the owner would agree now that those ducts will be transferred vertically in the side wall of our, of our building, you know, to whatever distance, 36 to 42 inches above the roofline at that point.
In the side wall of your building?
It's going to have to be, you know, because I, I don't think we're going to wreck the whole house otherwise.
So?
Have anybody spoken to the neighbors about this before? It's obvious you could see some type of exhaust on the other side of the building, on the south, you know, on the face of the building.
Yeah, so we were in contact with RNA and that's actually where those MUA comments came from and got revised is after discussions with, with RNA. None of these issues ever came up in the past. But what I, what I will say, I think, is it's not uncommon for there to be exhaust vents or other things on the sides of buildings, especially when buildings are on the property line. Those sorts of ducts and vents shouldn't, shouldn't be there. Shouldn't be anything, anything there. And it is typically something that gets worked out during the building department process. Because this gentleman's property is on the lot line, my client will need a protection plan and a consent from this gentleman to file permits with the building department. And that's where I typically see these things worked out. I, I do think that the information presented to the board this evening, including the survey and architectural plans and engineering plans, all show that this gentleman's building is on, on the lot line. If that turns out to not be true, if there's other information that, that this gentleman has that disputes that, I'll exchange information with him and that's something that'll have to be addressed. But, you know, this was several purchases that my client made. There were, I think, multiple surveys and there will be more surveys in the future as construction goes on. So I, I, I think the information here tonight is that this is an as-of-right project and the, the survey is accurate. Again, certainly exchange information with this gentleman.
My concern is not that if the project is as of right or not, you know, the project itself. You went through the process of putting the application in, we went through the process of drawing a beautiful building and designing a, a beautiful building in that neighborhood. Not knowing that what's going to happen to the exhaust stuff that's at the side of the building of a neighbor that lives right next door to you.
Right, so I, I understand.
That part, the neighbor's there. That wasn't brought up and you're saying you're, you're under the impression that that's your property? The alleyway?
Part of it is, from what I saw on the survey, it shows up maybe less than, less than a foot of, of that section of the alleyway.
So I just want to be clear, when we use terms like alleyway, I don't think this is an alleyway. I think this is a side yard of property. Whether that side yard is part of your property or the applicant's property, according to the survey that's shown on the screen, it appears that your building is on the property line. But you're saying you believe your survey shows something
Correct.
different.
Okay.
So first of all, that's an issue that's got to be worked out, whether it's here or somewhere else. It's a legitimate issue that needs to be worked out. We got to go on what's in front of us. And it appears from this survey, the building is on the property line, the, the neighbor's building, not the applicant's building, the neighbor's building. I think in fairness to the applicant, the issue of dealing with the exhaust within their building, running it up as to not cause this gentleman any further inconvenience or expense is not something that you would attempt to deal with prior to application for a lot of reasons, up to and including not getting to this point tonight. So I think that that's why it was designed the way it was designed, knowing that the exhaust would have to be relocated. Clearly, the applicant is not only understanding that, is telling this board they're willing to incur that cost and do it within their building and get it to the necessary code height above the building. Those are the legal comments for what they're worth. Chairman and the board, obviously, if you're uncomfortable with the surveying issue, you have the right to further explore that. If it turns out that there's a boundary line dispute, that's got to be rectified and I have all the confidence in the world that Mr. Joseph knows how to do that over the course of the next several years before the building would get constructed.
And, you know, we, we do intend to put the building on the property line. So if the property line is moved, some dimensions may change, maybe not. But that's, that's our intention here. There's no intention to build over our property line.
Sure.
The only other thing I'll, I'll say is that, you know, this application was, was carried, I think, once or twice, right? And my phone number is on the bottom of every notice. I, I don't like surprising this board, although that's happened a lot lately. And I don't like being surprised myself, so I, you know, wish I had a little bit more time to, to.
I called, I phoned them for Jersey City and then they told me to bring it up at the board meeting. So I need to call you, I may have called you. You mentioned the setback on the windows, I guess, on your building, I guess. But they don't seem to align to where our windows are. So that, that was something else, I just noticed that now.
Certainly.
Actual question, you said RNA contacted RNA, they said it's okay, but did you contact the neighbor next door?
I, I didn't personally contact the neighbor next door. I, I always contact the formal community group.
That's the neighbor next door?
Yeah.
RNA's not here?
No, I, I understand.
He's there.
I understand, yeah. We, I mean, yeah, we sent out the notices, but I, I, again, I'll exchange information with, with this gentleman and, and we'll, we have to deal with it. I, I do think it's a construction level issue.
I just want to make one, one quick comment then. What the, the, it's above and beyond what they want to do. They'll, they'll take care of the expenses of the exhaust, which is very admirable for you. That's, that's being a good neighbor, right? And that's what the board likes to hear. We can't force them to do it, but they're willing to do it. And another thing to keep in mind that I am always have a problem with is whenever there's a small space. And you made the comment at the beginning of your talk, how do you waterproof maintain or fix a small space later on? So this building going to the property line will be a sealed, no headache problem going down the future. When we have a small space, you have a potential for garbage buildup and an impossibility of ever repairing anything if something goes wrong on the side of those buildings. You know, so just to keep that in mind, I appreciate the fact that you guys are willing to do what you want to do.
And, and, and when this building gets dropped, right, well, let's call it 534, and we have ample space to measure exactly where his windows are, we're certainly going to accommodate where his windows are. We would never be partially building a wall in front of this gentleman's windows, right? So, you know, that's something that, you know, I'll go on the record to say that your windows are certainly going to be accommodated, right?
Well, and have to be, correct, Mr. Van der Mark?
Yeah, you know.
So they have to provide a certain distance through these window wells for those existing windows along the property line.
So a, as far as the lot line goes, if, you know, a dispute, will counsel walk me through the process?
Sure.
This, this building can't get built if your survey's incorrect and your neighbor's survey is. Well, it, it's not that it can't get built, but it'll have to be adjusted.
If there's a discrepancy between the two surveys, so if I take a look at this survey, it doesn't match the survey that we have, then we'll either go back to our surveyor or get a third surveyor to take a look at it. Surveyors make a mistake all the times.
Sure.
That's why we, we end up in gaps in the legal descriptions across properties. It happens, right? I, I like to think that the survey from, you know, today as opposed to 2003 is more accurate. But I've been proven wrong with that many, many times. Technology does not always make things better.
Of course.
So that, that's what'll have to, have to happen, but this is the first time we've been notified of a potential discrepancy.
Well, Mr. Joseph, the one thing that I'm a little concerned about is the neighbor believes that his building is a foot or so off the property line, which is even, believe it or not, more problematic than if it's on the property line.
I, I, I think surveys are misread and misinterpreted often. I, I certainly misreg surveys many, many times. And the difference between a dotted line, a dashed line, a solid line, it's very possible there's no discrepancy in the surveys. And especially when a property's been used a certain way for such a long time, it's, it's easy, I think, to assume that this is my property, this is your, your property.
And like I said, this will get worked out before ground is broken, before anything's demolished?
Yes. I, I mean, I have several, several matters where if the building department even hears there's a potential dispute, they don't want to touch it until that's worked out, as, as they should.
And Chairman, I would even say that it's completely reasonable that there be a condition in any resolution of approval with respect to property lines and surveying of, of both properties.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think we, you know, we do represent that the materials submitted are accurate and, and true. I, I do think that's a standard condition.
Mr. Joseph, my problem, obviously, as you can appreciate, is exactly to the point that you just raised, which is there's a possibility that both surveys are wrong because both people took the wrong monument and ran from the wrong point and, you know, it's very rare here in this great city, but elsewhere.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. There would be no objection to such a, a condition. And, and like I said, when, when properties are this close together and, and being attached and on the property line, building department does require a consent as well.
Okay. Okay, so we'll add that condition whatever the outcome is tonight, that, you know, site, site boundaries have to be worked out before any construction takes place.
Absolutely.
Okay? Anything else, sir?
I don't know if it's relevant, but with the new building coming up, there's not enough parking for the residents. I know that there's a lot of parking spots for their, their cars. But is there going to be any kind of enforcement so that, you know, the residents who live there can park? Because I, I don't know if, if the people who are going to move in are going to be able to park in that building or park outside. It's just, I don't know if this is going to bring it up, but it's initially.
So sir, I would say this to you, they do not need any type of relief from this board with respect to how much parking they are or are not providing. The city is well aware of parking in the city.
And this is my neighborhood as well. I, I live a few blocks away, I get it. Believe me, I get it.
Yeah, it's not part of that, his issue, it's just something I wanted to say.
Yeah, no, I mean, they're, they're complying with everything they have to comply with at this point as far as the board goes. But as my neighbor, my neighborhood goes, yeah, I get it. But, yeah, they're complying. Okay. Okay. All right, is there anybody else here from public that wants to comment? Anybody else from public?
Seeing one from the public, I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Cam, you're handling this?
Uh, yes, I'm covering for Juru. And firstly, just the project itself meets the purpose and intent of the zone plan. It's a four to five story mixed use building in the RC2 zone. And secondly, the planner assigned to this issued a staff report dated December 19th of 2024. Are those conditions acceptable?
They are acceptable with the additional conditions discussed.
Yes, and with that sixth condition for the survey dispute to be remedied, do we wanna make that remedied prior to memorialization of resolution or signature plans?
I think signature plans are more appropriate, counsel.
Yes, agreed. That'd be appreciated.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll put it on the record that I think Mr. Joseph should obviously get a hold of the gentleman, get a copy of his survey as soon as possible and analyze it himself to determine if it's something that is gonna need further exploring by Mr. Joseph's surveyors.
Okay, and with agreement to those conditions, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Cam.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0124 as presented to the board together with the additional conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Yeah, I just wanna emphasize that going forward, just work with the neighbors as good neighbors in resolving the issue there. Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsari.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I wanna echo Commissioner Gangadin's comments there. You know, we always encourage being a good neighbor. Legally, we can encourage that, but, you know, we do encourage it. So, you know, I'm happy to see you're willing to work with the neighbor. And I think it's a great project. I think it's a good fit for the neighborhood, and it's nice design, so my vote is aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I keep taking up so much of your time.
Not gonna say anything. Okay, let's move on to item 13. It's case P2024-0189 is a conditional use at Ford Jordan Avenue.
Right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Michael Leon. I'm from, I'm with the law firm of Portia Bluman and, sorry, I'm with the law firm of Portia Bluman and Newman. I'm here today in representation of applicant Maris LJ LLC located in Ford Jordan Avenue identified in the city of Jersey tax map as lap 27, block 15102. I will like to mark the affidavit of public service as exhibit A1.
Thank you, counsel.
So we have a very straightforward application today. The applicant is requesting a conditional use approval for a commercial tenant where all the conditions are met for a class five cannabis retailer at an existing ground floor commercial site. This application has received approval from the Jersey City CCV. The applicant is proposing an interior alteration and signage to the building. The site is located within a neighborhood of, within a neighborhood commercial once on district under the New Jersey ordinance section 345 that 60.5, which permits retails of sales and services. You will hear today testimony from the applicant architect, Ron Elkins, who will take you through the floor plans and some of the operational details about the application. In addition, you will also have the opportunity to speak to one of the representative of of the applicant, Igor Gore, in case you have any additional questions that you would like to proceed. And I think with that, I would like to call Mr. Elkins.
Chairman, for purposes of the record, I've had the opportunity to review the affidavit of server proof paling with respect to the application this evening. It does appear to be in order, so we can mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
I don't wanna corrupt your notes. I didn't wanna start pulling on cables and.
That's fine. Everybody does it, it's fine.
Can you see? Yes. I do. Sure, Ron Elkins, R O N, last name Elkins, E L K I N S.
Mr. Elkins, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Elkins, can you provide the board with the floor plan and just walk them through it?
Certainly. So as Mr. Leon mentioned, this is Ford Jordan Avenue, block 15102, lot 27, in the NC1 neighborhood commercial zone. And it is an existing, let me get through these. It's an existing three story masonry mixed use building, two residential units above, or two floors of residential units above, commercial office and retail on the ground floor. The ground floor space is approximately 900 square feet. I'll I'll touch more on the exterior in a moment. But basically, the scope of work is minimal demolition on the interior. There are some glass wall panels that we're planning on reusing, existing restroom at the rear of the space. And then there is a walkway along the north side of the property here. The gist of the plan is basically customers, north is directly, basically plan north is up on the the plans. Customers enter and exit at the west side of the property. Your IDs will be checked by a guard immediately. And then if they are of age, they are allowed to enter the retail area and shop. Once they, once they pay, they'll be exiting, you know, directly out the same doors that they came in on. As for deliveries, you know, cannabis deliveries will be delivered on the northeast exterior door. That's an existing door and an existing exterior walkway. We will be adding additional lighting and security on the exterior of the building for security and safety. Once deliveries come into the space, they will be unpackaged back in this open office receiving area, which at that point, then they'll be entered into the inventory and then taken to the secure vault for long term storage. Any cannabis laden waste, whether it's spoiled products or or residue from packaging, will be safely stored here in the interior waste bins, which will then be hauled out to the curb by an, oops, by an employee during a scheduled licensed waste hauler for pickup. They won't, it won't just be left on the on the curb. Looking at the restricted areas, it might be a little difficult to read on the screen, but basically, the only area that customers have access to without ID check is here at this white area here at the front. Once they are determined to be of age, they are allowed in the shopping area, basically this single slashed area here, and that's it. Everything else is off, you know, off limits. It's only employees. The vault will be secured with a wire mesh below the drywall. All six sides of the cube, if you will, the floor, all four walls and the roof, or the ceiling of the the vault will be secured. And then the security plan has been redacted because I know this is, you know, public information. But basically, there will be security cameras essentially in every corner of every room except the restroom. All the doors will be electronically controlled with key fobs or or PIN codes. And we will also be adding exterior cameras to the front just to identify anyone coming in, coming in or or leaving the space. Carbon filters will be added to dedicated exhaust systems to to mitigate any odor, you know, that might escape from the from the space. However, most of the products that'll be coming into the space will be prepackaged and sealed anyway, so there's gonna be very little odor to begin with. Guards will be employed to basically make sure no one, you know, starts to consume on the public sidewalk right outside of the space or also to eliminate loitering or, you know, long lines. I think cannabis dispensaries have been open in Jersey City and and New Jersey in general long enough now that the, there won't be lines around the block, you know, once they open usually. Exterior work will basically be limited to the, you can see in the elevation here at the bottom right hand corner, the two existing doors on the property will stay. One is access to the residential units. One is access to a small utility closet with gas meters, electric meters, things like that. The storefront will be slightly reconfigured and replaced with similar storefront that's there now. However, it will have a, an opaque security film on the the glazing so that people on the sidewalk won't be able to see into the space. And then there's also an existing, you can see it in the photo a little bit better, an existing roll down shutter that'll be repaired and maintained for security after hours. Signage will be limited to this, zoom in a little easier, this band here, which is basically the limit for the NC1 zone. And it will not be eliminated, again, because signage in NC1 zones is not allowed. We will have exterior, let me zoom back in on that. We will have exterior security lighting on the side, the north side of the building, which is on the left side of this elevation here, primarily for that walkway for employee access and deliveries in that side. And I believe that's the end of my testimony, unless there are any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody? Questions? Anyone? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure whether the board wanted to speak to the applicant's representative.
I don't know from a zoning standpoint if it really
So I don't think we have.
makes a difference in our decision or not?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. All right, is anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone here from public?
Chair, seeing one from public, I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Who do we have here? Matt, you're handling this?
Yeah. So Francisco Espinoza did the initial review, to which I inherited. I reviewed all the documents submitted to the Jersey City Planning Office. And I also reviewed his memo dated 12/12/24. Similar to the other case that we heard tonight, I will be asking to strike condition five, but all other conditions in the motion, in in the event that a motion is made to approve this application, staff does recommend that those conditions apply. I would ask counsel if you've been able to review the memo and.
Yes.
Conditions? Okay, so minus five, those other five conditions would would be applicable. We did do a review of the location. It's permissible here. There's also a map attached to the memo that shows that there are no concurrent or approved cannabis retailers within the buffer from this location. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0189 as presented to the board.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Acting Chair Gangadin.
Vice Chair. Aye.
That's fine. That's fine. Take it.
No, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure you're listening.
It's yours.
Councilwoman Prinsari.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
The Chairman Langston.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Have a good night. Thank you. All right, let's move on to item 15. It's case P2024. I'm sorry, I skipped one. Item 14, case P2024-0120 is a minor site plan for 23 Marion Place.
You got me either way, cuz I have 15 also.
Perfect.
Good evening again, Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvell and Micali. On behalf of the applicant, Medna Builders LLC. Just before I start, this is a notice case. Notice was actually provided multiple times for multiple meetings, but most recently for this meeting. And I'll just defer to counsel to confirm that is in order. I believe I have a copy of it as well. I do.
Have the original.
No, thank you.
Come on.
Chairman, I received the affidavit of publication with respect to the application at 23 Marion Place here in the city. Had the opportunity to review it. It does appear to be in order. You're gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel. So with that, just a brief introduction to the application. The property in question, as I mentioned, is 23 Marion Place, block 10404, lot 4.01. And we are in the R1 zone. I have to stop saying that this is one of the more recent applications in the AHO overlay as obviously there have been a number since it was adopted. But this is an application taking advantage of the affordable housing overlay. And ultimately, we are proposing to construct a new three story building consisting of 11 residential dwelling units, along with an accessory dwelling unit in the rear. I wanna indicate as well that while the majority of these units are one bedroom units, as you'll see from our architect, the ground floor does house that three bedroom affordable housing unit. And I do have confirmation from your division of affordable housing that it is satisfactory and it passes their muster. And ultimately, they signed off and certified to the to the plan as being presented this evening. I also wanna indicate, as I know Commissioner Torres always asks the question every time, that the ADU in the rear is also a three bedroom unit, but that will not be the affordable housing unit, just preempting the question I know is coming. And and once, as well, I wanna indicate for the record, we did initially intend to appear in January at this meeting. We were, we were reached out to actually a day before that meeting on the Monday by Mr. Capazoli, Joe Capazoli. My understanding is it's not a formal neighborhood association. And when I had asked and done my due diligence, there was not a formal association. But he reached out and said, hey, you know, we do typically discuss applications in this area. Would you be amenable to adjourning your application to meet with us? And I apologized and said I would have reached out sooner, but I had no objection to doing it. My client was amenable. We were then supposed to be on the February 11th meeting, although that was unfortunately canceled. So now we're here at the February 25th meeting, and I can comfortably say we did meet with Mr. Capazoli and the Neighborhood Association. Being that this is a virtually as of right application, there really was not much feedback or or commentary at all. The one variance we have, and then I'll move into my professionals, we went back and forth with city planning on this. In your ordinance, it talks about the location of bicycle storage, and it says that it cannot be located more than four vertical steps from grade. And if it is, you must provide some alternate means to get there, a ramp system, something of that. We are providing that, so we initially did not view that as a variance. It seems to comply with the language. City planning felt, and it may be to to be safe, better safe than sorry, that we should seek the variance and nevertheless support the variance by virtue of the fact that we do have the the ramp there, or I should call it a runnel. And so belt and suspenders, we are gonna have planning testimony to speak to that variance as well. So with that, Chairman, Commissioners, unless there's any questions of me, I'm happy to proceed with Mr. Bodnar, who is our architectural witness.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Should be up. Yes, I do. Yes, my name is Russell Bodnar, B O D N A R. I reside at 52 Long Hill Road in Long Valley, New Jersey. I appeared here several times before. I'm a licensed architect since 1995, and I've been in my own business since 1997.
And Russ, your license is in good standing this evening?
It's in good standing today.
Thank you, Mr. Bodnar. You're qualified.
Okay, thank you very much. As we're, as we're saying here, I put on the rendering first. I kinda like to show the pretty picture first. Our building itself is a, is good, is an R1. It's gonna be a three story building. We're complying with all the bulk requirements for the R1.
Mr. Wine, you wanna mark this?
I was not gonna cut off Russ, but suggest that we mark this.
I was not gonna cut off Russ, but suggest that we mark this as A2, this particular rendering, as it was not submitted as part of the package. Russ, just to confirm before we go forward, the rest, the remainder of the plans are what's on the portal?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. So I figure we'll just start off with this as well. As you can see here, it's a, it's a, it's gonna be an 11-unit project in terms of the front building and one unit in the rear. The 11 units in the front building are 10 one-bedrooms, and they range from 655 square feet to 745 square feet, so, in terms of one-bedrooms. And then the, the three-bedroom in the front building, which is our affordable unit, is 1,184 square feet, and we also have a three-bedroom in the rear of our ADU in the back of the building, which is 1,165 square feet. So as you can see here, our building's primarily in the front, we're trying to mimic some other buildings in the neighborhood, adjacent to us is a brick building, and we took some metal panels, and we put some metal panels underneath the windows, and at one time I had them white, but then we, you know, we changed them over to a black metal panel with a black cornice, and we have cement board siding on the side of our building with some insert overlays in terms of around our windows to give it some character, because our left side of our building still will be visible, because we have a parking lot next to us. Our left side of our building has a three-foot plus one setback from the side, our right-hand side of our building is on the property line, the adjacent buildings on the property line, it kinda goes off a little bit, an angle starts off about four or five inches from the property line, and goes off to about, almost a foot in the back, but the building has a little bit of a lean to it, so it actually kinda leans in two inches in the front and like three inches in the back, so it's about one foot at the most in the back. So that's one of those things that seems to happen quite often in Jersey City, on older buildings. As we jump into the plans, like I said earlier, we are on 23 Marin Boulevard, I mean Marin Place, Marion Place, I keep saying Marin, Marion Place. It's off of Giles Avenue and West Side Avenue, it's right around the corner from Broadway. Everybody's familiar with Broadway, it's a very large street that comes into Jersey City off of Tunnelley Avenue. So let's jump down a little bit in terms of the plans. As you can see here, we actually have a basement, a little, well, it's not really a basement, more of a cellar than it is a basement, it's only a partial basement. Our parking for our bikes is located in that basement, in that location on the bottom down there, we have nine bike parking spaces down there. On the left-hand side, you can see that little runnel design on the staircase, where it actually flips down when you have your bike, so if you take your bike, you flip the thing down, you run the bike up along that, up to the next level, and you come out. And we also have our trash room down there, we also have a mechanical trash room machine that actually brings up the staircase to, to bring the garbage out and brings the garbage back downstairs. We decided to do that instead of trying to find another location. I actually had proposed at one point in the backyard to put some bikes back there, but it was outside and, and nobody thought that was a great idea. As you can see here, we also have the two street front, two street trees that we're proposing in the front of the building, and we also have some landscaping in the back and around the sides, and we have some walkways that go into the ADU area in the back. And like I said before, the ADU is a three-bedroom, which was 1,165 square feet, and the front units here are affordable at 1,184 square feet. Behind the two, we have two one-bedrooms, and they're, they range from 655 square feet to 745 square feet. If we go back down to the next page, which is our second floor, you can see the second floor of the ADU, the second floor of the ADU has the two bedrooms on the upper level, and down below, we have four one-bedrooms, and they range from 655 square feet to 745 square feet. And again, the third floor is an exact copy of the second floor without, obviously, the ADU, because the ADU is only two stories and only 18 feet tall. And our roof is accessible only for mechanical equipment, we don't have no roof deck, there's no accessibility for the roof deck, it just has the roof deck, and we have green roofing trays. We have 500 square feet of green roofing trays on our roof, and as we go back down, you can see the elevations, like I showed earlier, in terms of the rendering. Some of our materials consist of the brick, a little bit of stonework in the back of the, on the back of the building, as well as our cement board siding in our rear of our property, as well as the cement board siding, we're providing on the left-hand side, on the left-hand side from the front of the building, which is our eastern portion of the building, and as well as, we can see, we have the, our front facade has a brick facade that we were proposing, as you saw on the rendering earlier. If we go to the next page, you can see that we have a light well, which I forgot to mention earlier, we have a light well adjacent to the neighboring property, they have some windows on our property, we gave ample area from them, they have obviously the three-foot one from their, from our property line to our actual windows that we show, which gives them a little bit more than three-foot one, like three-foot five, three-foot six, to their windows, but we actually gave the one foot on one side and the one foot on the other side adjacent to the windows, and they have two windows, so our light well's quite large, on the right-hand side. You can see the other areas, or is where we're saying we're touching the other buildings, these two locations here, and the rest of it is either above the building or adjacent to the building, so those adjacencies have cement board siding. There is a little bit of a weird thing on the right-hand, on the left, right-hand side of our property, there's a small retaining wall, and that retaining wall goes up about three feet, so that retaining wall is in disrepair, we're gonna end up rebuilding that entire retaining wall, to, obviously, to make the construction much nicer, and we're doing that all the way around our entire property. At first, I had the ADU was said to be at zero lot line, which is actually, our garages were actually at the zero lot line. The new ordinance came in saying we have to move the ADU two feet of the property line, so we actually have a retaining wall in the rear, which I'll then have to fill in the two-feet area, and then put a new retaining wall in to make the ADU, so that's where, that's a little bit different than the normal things going on in this property. As you can see down here, on our ZN6 sheet, you can see the elevations of the neighboring buildings are all about three, three stories, they all have, you know, double-hung windows, we stayed with the concept of the neighborhood, they, some of them have cornices, some don't, so we decided to put the cornices on the, on the building to give it a little bit of that existing old-school flavor, so we don't like kinda stick out as a totally new building in the neighborhood. So that's pretty much everything here. Just, you know, our lot itself, I didn't say earlier, was 4,500 square feet. And our building coverage is 82.5, which is under the 85 max required space.
Or lot cover, yeah, so I was just gonna ask a couple of questions. So one, regarding the building coverage, I noticed when I was looking at the agenda right now, I, I believe it's a mistake, it does say there's a building coverage variance, but I don't think that there's a building coverage requirement here, it's simply, if you exceed 65%, we provide more than, I think, 15% on the roof?
That's what we did.
And we are compliant there, okay?
We're compliant there, as well as there's, if you have the ADU, it's a 90% requirement for a total lot coverage, and we're only at 89.7% with the ADU.
Okay.
And including all the sidewalks and everything else.
And then my last question for you is, as to the site plan, we are closing up the existing curb cut that's there and reducing the impervious coverage on the site, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Chairman, I have nothing further for Mr. Bodnar.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Mr. Bodnar, I saw the mechanical units on the roof, are they screened or are they not screened?
Yes, they're screened.
Okay. I thought I saw it on there, I just wanted to.
Yeah, we have the screening all the way around them, all the way around these units, and there's actually some screening details further down in the set of drawings, but you have screens all the way around, and we also, I provide my four-foot, almost four-foot power pit around the entire building, because we do actually have the staircase that goes up there, and I rather err, err on the side of caution in case anybody still goes up on the deck, that, so no child or somebody actually goes to the edge of the prop, edge of the building and falls off, which is the last thing.
Somebody's going up on that roof.
Yeah, somebody will go up on the roof and that might be an issue, if they fall off. As you can see here, that, here's that screening detail down on ZN7, so you can see what is the screening, I still left some lights out there, just so, you know, you can go up there and have some, just in case, you know, you need to fix the mechanicals or in case something happens on the roof. So as you can see, also, the green roofing trays are mentioned on the bottom as well as in these locations. I don't really know, that's pretty much my entire testimony, I don't really have anything else in here that I.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions?
On that, the next page, Z, ZN8?
ZN8. Yeah, ZN8 is the.
So that white building on the side with the windows?
Yes.
That's the, your neighbor's building?
Yes, and the light well is that location of those windows.
That's where the light rail's gonna go. So what is that pipe there?
That pipe is the electrical pipe which comes down, and luckily, like I said, I could still kinda leave that, because I do have that little four- or five-inch space between our building and their building.
They have a four-inch space between buildings?
Well, no, because, like, sometimes you have spaces between buildings, like around four inches or something, at the end, you end up taking a, a piece of like metal, or you have like framing pieces that go in there, and you connect one building to the other building with, in this way, if you.
What do you do on the roof?
And you have, you have to connect the top and the bottom, so you have no water or anything that goes into those locations, so you actually connect not only the front, like at that location, where the window well is, again, I have to put that, and as well as like, if your building's a little bit off, sometimes I have to put a little cant on my building to your building, if my building's taller than yours, so this way the water does not go in and I flash over the top of it. It's, it's something, it's, you know, that's why the building department requires the ability to talk to the neighbor and make sure, pre-construction, that you can kinda do this, because I've have, I'm in court right now, somebody that won't let me fix their building. They won't, they keep telling me we wrecked their building, but they won't let me fix the hole. It's going on for like a year.
So right now, though, that electrical, you put a four-inch space of in between, let's say, let's say, let's, let's go higher, let's go eight-inch space, 12-inch, a space of between builders, how does somebody service that if they have a problem with their electrical?
Yeah, I mean, I could do, we could also fix that for them, because in reality, sometimes I do that as well during construction, like right now, you can see it goes down.
Have you spoken to the neighbors?
Yeah, you take, we would end up taking their line, bringing it down, and then bringing it underground to that location, because, you know, and we still have that ability to do that for them, because that's not that big a deal, because it's only, it's a very small pipe in terms of what it, you know, what it is in terms of that, and they have some of their electrical feed lines coming down there, so we could bring those down for them as well. That's something that we always end up working out a lot of times in the field with people, they have like wires or something adjacent that we'll have to tuck to PSCNG and have the head relocated to the front, and then they, and the, and the line will come down, like, if it still comes down, we'll have to come down the side of the building, right at that location, and then, in, luckily, we have, like I said, I actually have the four inches for the first time in a while, but we're, we're actually not so bad, because that pipe's only two, that's only an inch and a half, two-inch line, because it's only, you know, it's only a single-phase, 200 feet.
Appreciate that you're looking into it, and, oh, leave it aside, that's gonna be a headache later on.
It's, yeah, those are always those weird things, you know, that's why I said, like, you can see here, it's like, the building's kind of inset, but it's inset where the block is, and then all of a sudden, it kinda goes the other way, you can see in the back, it kinda starts coming out a little bit, so it's, you know, they, they gave you the, in the survey, they always give you the one number, they never give you the upper numbers, you know, so, and then it kinda has a little bit of a slope. I checked these out now, that, one of my buildings, I didn't check out when I was younger, and it was actually inside my building envelope by a foot six, that's how far it was leaning. That's crazy. That's a little crazy.
All right, anybody else? Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Bodnar, we appreciate it.
All right, so with that, I will call our next and final witness, Carolyn Worstel, to speak to the variance relief being sought.
Yeah, you can make up the pretty picture.
Yeah, I'll get the pretty picture.
I do. Carolyn Worstel, W-O-R-S-T-E-L-L.
Ms. Worstel, good evening, your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you very much. So as, as Ben sort of mentioned, we're here for a single variance, and it relates to that bike storage location. We are providing the more, we're actually providing more than the minimum number of biking, bike parking spaces, but the only reason we're here is because of that location. And as Ben mentioned, the language in the ordinance is a little bit vague. It does say ramps and elevators may be utilized to provide access to bike storage, not located at the first floor level. We are providing what could be termed a ramp, the runnel is essentially just, you know, a ramp that you put on the stairs and you guide your bike on it, and you push it up the stairs, or you let it, you know, gravity take it down the stairs. It is, meets that definition of a ramp, but city, the city didn't feel that that quite met what they, what their intent or thought of a ramp would be. So we are here requesting that relief, because we do, we do, we don't have an elevator in this building, as in the other alternative to get access to that basement. So, you know, overall, we look at this and say that this is, you know, a very, there's no substantial burden here. We are providing the parking spaces, we're providing that alternative access, it just is not what you would think of as like an ADA ramp, it's a slightly different ramp. But the methodology that's being employed, this is a standard commercial product, it's something you can buy, you know, and they, they make it, you tell them how long you want, and they will make it for you. So it is a commercial product, it is out there, it meets building code, it is used in other, you know, residential or commercial applications, so we do believe that it, that it meets the intent of the ordinance, which is to provide that alternative access. I think overall, this project, the benefits of this project all substantially outweigh the very minor, minor detriment of this one ramp for the, for the, for the bikes. You know, this project is overwhelmingly conforming with the R1 district standards, includes all setbacks, all coverage, height, you know, we're providing, as I said, more than the minimum number required of bike spaces, six are required and we're providing nine. The placement does sort of allow for more and larger units on that ground floor, including that one ADA unit, so by allowing the bike storage to be in the basement, we are sort of creating more space for that ADA accessible unit. And this project overall is really improving the site. Right now, it's at 100% lot coverage, you know, with this, we are removing, you know, that lot coverage, we're bringing it into conformance with what is permitted within the ordinance, we're eliminating a curb cut, we're adding new, two new street trees to the street, so I think overall that there are a lot of benefits that are being accrued by this project as a whole. You know, I think that this project is consistent with the municipal land use law, you know, it's consistent with Purpose C, providing adequate light air and open space, it's consistent with Purpose E, establishment of appropriate population density, it's consistent with the HO, and we are providing that affordable housing unit. We're promoting a desirable visual environment, consistent with Purpose I, with the new, new building, with the improved, you know, streetscape, with the, the street trees, as well as the, some of the, the new yard landscaping. There's no substantial detriment here to the public good. As I said, the building is overwhelmingly conforming with the R1, we're visually improving that streetscape, and we are providing the required bike parking spaces, and we're trying to meet that intent by providing this alternative. There's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan, the project is consistent with recommendations of the Jersey City land use element to continue efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods, and ensure the city's available housing is balanced and meets the needs of all current and future residents, and it fulfills the purpose of the R1 district to accommodate existing housing, encourage compatible infill, and preserve the streetscape and utilize on-street parking where lot frontage is narrow. So I think that overall, this project meets both the positive and negative criteria, and that the variance can be, relief can be granted.
Thank you, Carolyn, I have nothing further for this witness.
All right, thank you, Ms. Worstel, I have nothing, anybody else? Okay, counsel, is that your presentation?
That would conclude my presentation, I respectfully request the right to respond to any comment or sum up at the conclusion.
Okay. One comment, one comment I'll have is, you know, I always ask this when there's affordable units, that the affordable unit's made out of the same materials, has the same appliances, there's no difference whatsoever visually from the market rate units. Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment, anybody from public? Come on up.
I do. Michael Manzo, M-A-N-Z-O, lifelong, 82 Wright Avenue, Jersey City.
Mike, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Good evening all, and just to clarify something, we do. Good evening all. And just to clarify something, we do have an organization. It's called a neighborhood, a community, and, uh, we have great leaders. Mayor Prince Ari, our former councilwoman, uh, held all these community meetings to keep us abreast and look out for us, and now we have Mr. Bogiano because of the redistricting. So we do have an organization. When we found out that there was a building going for a variance, I reached out for Mr. Capizoli, we reached out for Mr. Wine. One, two, three, we got together. I think it was the best thing that could have happened. Ironically, uh, in the backyard, the 23 Marion Place is 943 Pavonia. And across from that is like 930, so I think Gene, uh, O'Connell did the variance for that. Parking became a crazy thing. We split hairs, reconfigured just to get it to work. Now, all of a sudden, it's lax or not even required, and we're into this affordable housing overlay. This is totally new for us. We don't know how it's gonna work. The only thing we asked, and, and we had this at one of the community meetings, that some of the people from the community should be allowed first access to these units. And I think it was Chuck at some of the meetings where they didn't think it was legal, but now a couple council members are picking up on it to rewrite it to maybe we can have a shot at getting the residents first crack at these units. Uh, that's all new, okay? Uh, the elevation works out to his benefit on the right side where he's gonna rebuild. I think that's gonna work out pretty good. And, and what was mentioned tonight by a couple comments here was good neighbor practices. Tonight, it's beautiful facade, it's the trees, it's this, it's that. But once the construction starts, they work late, they block streets, they throw debris all over, they're inconsiderate. And I think the best thing that happened that night when we got together between, uh, the Bedner Company and Mr. Wine, we have a good understanding, we exchanged numbers, and I'm very, very confident that if all works out with this affordable housing overlay, I think the construction's gonna go pretty smooth. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate your time. All right, is there anybody else here from public that wants to comment?
Chair, see no one for public. I would like to close the public portion.
Motion is made and seconded. Public is closed.
I am here on, uh, no, I'm, I'm here on behalf of Sophia today.
There it is, okay.
Um, and, uh, reviewed the, the documents, uh, tied to this application. Uh, reviewed the staff memo, um, and even, uh, authored some of it with Sophia. And, uh, it is dated January 2nd, 2025. Uh, this is an application, um, I think that was well-covered through the testimony. Staff, uh, does agree with the planning testimony regarding the variance. Um, with regards to, uh, the bike location, uh, bike parking location. Uh, there are, uh, seven recommended conditions in the staff memo. I would just ask if the council reviewed those and if they agreed to, uh, agreed to those conditions.
I could have sworn I saw six, so I just wanna make sure. Oh, there were seven. Yes, we have no issue with them.
Now there's eight. No, I'm just saying. Uh, all right, so, uh, staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Sorry, had a joke.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0120 as presented to the board, together with staff recommendation and conditions.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate, um, work with your neighbors in regards to that electrical, be good neighbors. Um, I.
Councilwoman Prince Ari?
Just, uh, for clarification, the ordinance that the city council passed as it relates to priority for Jersey City residents, it has to do in part with the funding that the project gets. So if there's no abatement, no pilot, no federal, no state funding, a conversation can be had about that. So please, again, have that conversation with your neighbors in Marion. I know that there are a lot of elderly people that live there that are looking for transition to smaller apartments, so please do keep that in mind. I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Yeah, I know that the, um, variance with the ramp, whether it, which way they make you go, um, I like the way it looks. The picture that shows it, tucked underneath the banister and stuff like that, it seems like that could work. And, uh, it's a good alternative. Um, and the affordable housing, um, glad it's in the same building, like always, that is a important thing. So with that, I, I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
I vote aye.
Chairman Lexington?
Yeah, I think the, the deviation is more than reasonable. Um, I've seen those ramps before, and it's, it's workable, it's absolutely workable, so, uh, other than that, I think it's a good project. I'm happy to see affordable housing for the neighborhood. And, uh, counsel, I appreciate you being a good neighbor and, uh, reaching out. And, Mike, thank you. It's nice to hear somebody come down and say something positive that carries a lot of weight with us. It carries weight when you come in for something negative, that you, you can go both ways. So, um, with that said, I'm gonna vote aye, and, uh, good luck.
Thank you. Motion carries all in favor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's call, uh, item 15, is case P2024-0163, is a preliminary and final major subdivision for 229 to 231 Dwight Street.
Good evening, everybody. Chairman and Commissioners, for the record, Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvell and Maselli, on behalf of the applicant 225 Dwight Street Holdings LLC. Uh, this application before you this evening is for preliminary and final major subdivision approval. Uh, no variance is affiliated with this application, and it is for the property located at, the address is technically 229-231 Dwight Street, Block 24904, Zone R1. But, uh, the, I know the mailing address often calls it 225 Dwight Street, so to, to go by the block and lot, I think that's the, the most appropriate way. Um, I just wanna indicate for the record, what we're proposing is to, uh, is to subdivide the subject property into seven almost identical, all conforming lots. Um, we have had an opportunity to work with the tax assessor department and confirm that they are comfortable with the labeling of the lots as we've done it. Um, we've also had the opportunity to work with Mr. Black and planning staff as to generally the configuration and the fact that there are no variances, and as well, uh, the location of what would be shared driveways, uh, i- in the event, and obviously, at some point, hopefully, there is development on these seven lots. So those have been laid out, they've been discussed at length with Mr. Black. Um, the idea would be to have four driveways for the seven properties. Three of them, six of them will have shared driveways. The seventh, because it's an odd number, y- you know, you can't kind of propose a shared driveway with your neighboring property, um, because it's, it's, you can't bind them to something else. So that one would be an independent driveway, uh, ultimately. Obviously, there is no development proposed here today, so there are no driveways being proposed today. It was just more of a matter of some back and forth regarding the subdivision. Um, with that, I have one witness I intend to call this evening. It's a little unusual, but just the, I, I think I've done it here before, just the surveyor, who is going to speak to the existing site conditions and his proposed subdivision, along with its compliance with the lot area and lot width requirements, which are really the only operative zoning requirements, uh, for a vacant lot being subdivided. So unless you have any questions of me, I'm happy to proceed with Mr. Rodriguez.
Notice, counsel.
Notice, right. I'll get that for you.
Thank you. Chairman, I see the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the major subdivision. Does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record. Counsel, I've had the opportunity to review the proposed subdivision plan. I think the only real clarification, it's pretty straightforward, they're gonna be 25-foot wide lots, varying in depth to some degree, but I think it's that last lot, that seven or 907, that I think you just need to get some testimony as to how that still conforms with the requirements, and it's got that little cutout.
Yep, understood.
I do. Juan J U A N Rodriguez, R-O-D, R-I-G-U-E-Z.
Ms. Rodriguez, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, my license is current.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
All right, and if I could just ask, before you get started, as I see you didn't bring the computer, um, Cam, would you be able to put up the plans from the portal? This, I guess we can just put up the subdivision plan.
We usually make you say please, Mr. Wine.
Thought I said please, but not double please.
Mr. Rodriguez, while we're waiting, skier or snowboarder? I see the steamboat hat.
Skier guy.
All right.
Yes.
While we're discussing, I've just learned that there's actually this big distinction. When I ask people if they ski, it's like insulting if they snowboard. They're like, no, I snowboard.
It is.
Oh, okay.
It is.
I stay off mountains.
Just to be clear, it's all, it's all insulting to a hockey player, just.
Talking about currently, counsel.
Right, this is it.
Oh, this is the architectural.
This, this should be. Oh, that's all-state. Hold on. Let's go back to. How do we sort, maybe sort by? You went to subdivision plan?
Subdivision plan.
That's what you click?
I mean, that's it.
That's the only one you got. You don't have mine?
Uh, there should be that one. If not, we can hand out, now it was submitted by email. We can hand out the hard copies. This, this, okay.
I mean, we can use this one right here as a copy of mine.
Okay. All right, so Juan-
Another one that's gonna be filed.
So Juan, what I'm gonna ask you to do, if you can just explain the existing site condition, and then I'm gonna ask you to just discuss the, uh, seven independent lots and their compliance with the area and width requirements.
So currently, the, uh, the property is a large rectangular piece that's 175 feet, uh, in, uh, width and, uh, 100- The property's, uh, sorry about that. Uh, so the property is a large lot that's a rectangular shape, and it's 175 feet, uh, long by, um, 102.10 feet deep, with the exception of the, uh, lot on the, um, left side, on the west, western side of, of the property, which has a little corner cut out in the back, um, which is kind of insignificant right there. So they're all about 25 foot, the new lots are all about 25 foot wide. Uh, they all are, uh, 2,500 square feet plus in, uh, area. Um, and then the property conforms with, um, with a base map that was prepared also by our company, um, which was done under the, uh, state, um, regulations and, um, uh, for, for, uh, boundary, uh, surveys.
And Juan, just to confirm to, uh, Mr. Alampi's question, um, the measurement in your review of the ordinance, the definition of lot width is at the location of the required front yard setback. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So in other words, even though it's the, the one, I think it's 9.07, is notched in the rear, the lot width measurement is not taken in the rear, but taken at the zero-foot front yard?
Correct.
Okay.
And actually, in the back, it's actually, well, wider with, with, if you take the, uh, the notch out.
Right.
It's even wider.
And all of these lots exceed the 2,500 square foot minimum as well, is that correct?
Yes, they all do.
So Chairman, I know it's a little brief, but that's really the extent of my examination of Mr. Rodriguez.
No, that's, I think, exactly what we needed, so, um. All right, anybody? Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Appreciate it. Counsel, anything else?
So Chairman, um, as always, I'll just reserve my right to sum up, but I have nothing further on direct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? Anybody from public?
Chair, see no one from public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, this is yours, I think?
Yeah, planning staff would just ask that the applicant agree to the conditions, um, in the planning staff memo.
Yeah, we have no issue with those.
Okay, uh, otherwise, this is a completely conforming subdivision, and planning staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Cam.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0163 as presented to the board for approval.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz? Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
And Chairman Lexington?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
All right.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, counsel. Um, we're gonna take our, our, Gene, if it's okay, we're gonna take five right now, if you wanna set up for the next, uh, application while we're back there. Come to order again, please. And we do have an announcement to make after we get, or before we get started. We only have security here until 10 o'clock tonight. So we need to be done with testimony by 9:30 tonight. All right, we have to get out of the building before security leaves. Obviously, we can't have locked doors during a public meeting. That's a violation of the Public Meetings Act. So, uh, 9:30 is the end of testimony tonight. All right, I apologize, everybody. Room got quiet, didn't it?
For the record, it's 9:03.
Okay.
Oops.
So let's, um, call item 16, is case P2024-0135, is a minor site plan for 328 Halliday Street.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good evening, counsel.
Um, Eugene O'Connell appearing for the applicant Ian Gutch and Shannon Smith. This is a minor site plan for 328 Halliday Street. It's a undersized lot between Lafayette and Maple. Um, I have two witnesses tonight. Carolyn Greco is our architect, and Carolyn Wurstell is our planner, the Carolyn team. And, uh, there's only one variance for building coverage, so it is a notice case.
Thank you, counsel. Just let me mark it. Chairman, I receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 328 Halliday Street here in the city. I've had the opportunity to review it. It does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Okay, before I call Caroline, the, the rendering that's up on the board is not in the, on the portal, so it'll be A2.
That's gonna be the only sheet?
Yeah, it should be testifying to that, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Caroline, C-A-R-O-L-I-N-E. My last name is Greco, G-R-I-E-C-O.
Ms. Greco, good evening. Have we qualified you before? I'm not positive. Okay, if you could just give us your background, your licensing, and where you're licensed?
Um, I have a master's degree from Pratt Institute, uh, Master of Architecture. I am a licensed architect in both New York and New Jersey.
Okay, and that license is current tonight? The New Jersey one, I mean?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Caroline. Would you take us to the site plan?
Um, so the project address, as, as Gene mentioned, is 328 Halliday Street. It's currently a vacant lot. Um, the project is the new construction of a two-family dwelling. The redevelopment plan is Morris Canal. It's in the residential zone. The block is between Maple Street and Lafayette Street in the Bergen Lafayette neighborhood. Uh, the address is across the street from the rear of a Jersey City public school, PS22. Uh, the public school fronts Van Horn Street on the next block over. Um, on the northeast side of the block, uh, there are two-story wood-framed homes. In the center of the block, there is vacant land owned by the church. At, um, and then, um, the, let me see. The, uh, center of the block, um, beyond the vacant land owned by the church- The center of the block, beyond the vacant land owned by the church, our project falls in between a couple other masonry buildings. The property towards the north is two stories with a basement. The property that is to the south of us is three full stories. So in order to be consistent with, you know, the conditions of the block front, we have a, kind of mimicked the stories and the finished floor levels of the property on our south. So the first floor is going to be entered similar, again, to that property to the south with two steps and a stoop, again, about two feet above grade, so it is in line with the finished floor of the building on our south. The first floor will contain one one-bedroom unit and a common entrance. So there's a bedroom in the front at the first level, next to the common entrance, which leads up the stairs to the second unit. There's bathrooms and a kitchen in the center of the plan, and then the first-floor unit will have access to the rear yard. There's a rear patio with pavers, and then rear grass area. We are seeking a building coverage variance, as the attorney mentioned. The building coverage variance is for an additional 5% of coverage. We are not seeking a rear yard setback. So we still are maintaining the rear yard setback, even with the building coverage variance. And again, it was, it's due to the hardship of the narrow-sized lot. The proposed second-floor plan has, again, bedroom in the front, bathroom and kitchen in the center of the building, and then living space in the rear. On the third floor, which is, so the second-floor unit is duplex, the second and third levels, there's, again, bedroom in the front, bathroom, and then office space and a family room in the rear of the third floor. Our roof plan consists of a penthouse with, that provides access and storage. We have a roof deck and also green roof. The green roof takes up approximately 21% of the gross area of the building. So as I mentioned, we're applying for an additional 5% of building coverage. But again, even with the 5% of building coverage, we've, we have an additional 15% of green roof. So if you count for 5% of building coverage, the green roof covers that, and then an additional 15% of that logic. The front of the building is, again, going to be in character with, in line with the character of the buildings in the middle of the lot on either side of us, so it has a brick face. We also have black details, so black window sashes and frames, black cornice, black cornice over, small cornice over the entrance. And then there's a cast, like a medium brown cast stone that also counts for the water table and both the lintels and the cells of the windows. The rear of the residence will be vinyl siding, and again, the black frame windows. And the building is attached, so there'll be party walls on either side. There'll be both stucco and then vinyl siding for the portions of the building on the sides that do not front, I'm sorry, that do not attach to the existing structures on either side. And unless there are any questions, that concludes my testimony.
Okay, anybody have any questions? All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll call Carolyn Wurstel to just give any testimony on the building coverage.
Okay, and Ms. Wurstel, if you could just confirm for the record that you have been sworn in already tonight and are still under oath?
Yes, I have been sworn in, and I'm still under oath.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So as mentioned, we're here for a single variance, and that is for the lot coverage. This is a substantially undersized lot. It is approximately 1,660 square feet, where the, our district within the Morris Canal redevelopment plan was based on a typical, older R1 district. So it's 2,500 square feet is what is contemplated. So this is about, almost close to 1,000 square feet smaller than your typical lot is anticipated to be. So we are seeking, you know, the additional coverage. It allows for a larger building footprint that creates more livable spaces on what is otherwise a much smaller lot than is generally expected. But we are still able to provide all of the conforming setbacks. We're still providing a conforming rear yard setback, side and front yard setbacks. So it really sort of is that little bit of a mismatch between what is the requirements for the yards and how that sort of plays out and creates a building footprint. And so we're seeking to have that additional 5%, which really, again, allows for the layout as was presented. This additional 5% really is sort of mitigated by a lot of the improvements that are being done to this property. There is going to be new rear yard created. They're going to be pulling out, you know, I think, believe there was a shed and whatnot at the rear of the property that is going to be pulled out. And so that creates a new landscaped area in the rear yard where there wasn't historically. Additionally, there is going to be that green roof cover that, again, adds to the stormwater management on-site, which will, again, provide those benefits and mitigate that additional coverage. I, you know, I think that the granting of the deviation advances the purpose of the municipal land use law. It's consistent with purpose A. It's an appropriate use and development of the property. This is a conforming two-family development, which is a conforming use within this, the zone. It's going to provide an appropriate population density, consistent with purpose E. And it will promote a more desirable visual environment, consistent with purpose I. We're providing that infill development. We're sort of filling in that gap, you know, the missing tooth between these structures, as it were. So I think that that really will create a better visual environment along this whole block frontage, and sort of really, again, create and complete that block between these existing structures. I don't believe that the granting the deviation will result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare. As mentioned, you know, this is otherwise a completely conforming application, and the additional coverage is, you know, looking to be mitigated through that additional green roof. It meets all of the required height setback and other standards that will provide for that light air and open space, and it will not result in a substantial impairment to the zone ordinance or the zone plan. This is consistent with the residential zone, which was to encourage a denser pattern of development, where housing is in proximity to public park space and light rail station, and to protect and preserve the residential character of the Lafayette neighborhood through consideration of scale, streetscape, setback, design, and impact. And I do believe that this project really meets that intended goal of that district. It promotes the goals of the redevelopment plan, including acquisition of vacant land and derelict buildings for purposes of community, essentially creating the construction of new homes for use and occupation by residents of the neighborhood. So I think that we're really consistent with that goal, as well as the Jersey City master plan to create housing that's balanced, that meets the needs of current and future residents. So I really think that the positive and the negative criteria have been met, and that this variance can be granted.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Counsel?
Please, our presentation.
All right, thank you. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from public?
Chair, see no one from public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Eric, this is yours?
Yes.
Okay.
Staff agrees with the testimony provided by the applicant's professionals. As mentioned and demonstrated, the subject lot is undersized and quite narrow, which pretty much influences that building coverage variance here. And even a compliant building coverage on a lot like this would most likely influence a increased rear yard setback, which the current rear yard setback that's being proposed is 35 feet, so that would increase it even further to try to bring the building coverage into compliance. So this is like a good middle ground here. So staff recommends approval, contingent upon the applicant agreeing to the conditions enumerated in the staff memo.
We do agree to the conditions.
Okay, staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0135 as presented to the board together with staff recommendations and conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadhan.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Wurstel's testimony. I don't think there's any detriment to the master plan or the zone plan, and overall, I think it's a good use for a small lot, and I vote aye.
Motion. Thank you very much.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you. All right, let's call item 17 as case P2024-0210 as a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances, address being 2966 Kennedy Boulevard and 69 Cottage Street. Good evening, counsel.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Confolia, on behalf of the applicant, this is a notice case, and I'd like to give these to counsel.
Counsel, let's, obviously, we're not getting through the whole application. Let's try and pick a spot where we can make a clean break with testimony.
Okay.
Just so, you know, as far as the record goes, if there's anybody that isn't here tonight that has to read that testimony later, so let's just keep that in mind.
Okay, understood. Do you think you're going to get through Mr. Vandermark? Because I don't think you are. I don't think so. I mean. I mean, you got 15 minutes. Yeah. So I'll mark the notice. I have no issue with that. But we got 15 minutes, and you want Mr. Vandermark to talk for 15 minutes? I don't know that it does you any good, but. Let me, I don't want to waste time, but.
That's entirely up to if he wants to split testimony, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, you're not.
I'm just trying to keep a clean record, that's all.
Let me, how long do you think you'll be? 10? I don't know if we break.
10.
Come on, he's 25 minutes on a bad day. Let's do this. Chairman, I receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the applicant, Journal Square Tower LLC. It's preliminary final major site plan, 2966 Kennedy Boulevard and 69 Cottage Street. I've had the opportunity to review it. Does appear to be in order. We are going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record. Counsel, if you want to swear Mr. Vandermark in and have Mr. Vandermark provide 10 minutes of testimony, that is fine. It's completely up to you and in your discretion. He has 10 minutes. Okay, we'll start, yeah, we'll bring him up. I will just give a quick overview here. So it sounds like Mr. Vandermark's not getting any testimony. You know, I'm just going to hand it off to Mr. Vandermark.
Okay, and let the record show that Mr. Vandermark is, has been sworn in tonight already, is under oath, and is qualified.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, again.
Once again.
Vandermark, I understand you have a slide show up on the screen.
And I have 44 slides in this exhibit deck.
So A2 is a 44-slide exhibit deck. That'll be A2.
A2. Okay, so just to bring the board up to speed here, we have a pre-existing site of 20,800 square feet, okay? That is 60% greater than what the Zone III commercial center minimum is, right? So we have a large site, we have a corner site that is benefited by the office bonus, a quarter lot bonus D, and we are here tonight to propose an additional 20 stories in compliance with the new MIH, the Mandatory Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Okay, so this project was originally approved at 35 stories. Originally approved at 35 stories, we are here tonight with a 56-story version that is in compliance with the height in number of feet. We are here to ask for a variance for number of stories. However, we are working within the permitted volume of the redevelopment plan area and not requesting a variance for the building bulk and mass. As part of this application, it is a truly mixed-use application. It's a great application that this board has approved previously at 35 stories for various setbacks. This application had, just to, you know, basically bring everybody back up to speed, this application had a banquet hall. It had several restaurants, one including a rooftop, and it also had a hotel component as well as a residential component here. So the existing site is the old Pep Boys location. It's at the southeast corner of Cottage and Kennedy Boulevard. Again, prominent location. This is a gateway project for Journal Square. Project construction is already underway. As you can see here from the photographs of the construction site, we have five stories already constructed. The MIH, the Mandatory Inclusionary Housing, was passed. We halted construction on the 35-story version and came back to you to ask permission for the additional 20 stories to include an affordable component. So this application before you this evening has 542 residential units. Of the 542, we are proposing 63 affordable units, which is the equivalent of 11.6%. I think we are first in line, you know, bringing this new ordinance to fruition, and we have it here in front of you. You know, we have some hardships, you know, based on the setbacks that were previously approved, you know, coming back in here and trying to kind of bring this building back in to kind of meet the required setbacks on what this is being considered a new application is quite difficult. It's a hardship to, you know, basically reconfigure the structure on a podium and a foundation that's already there. This is the southern portion of the building. We're facing south, and again, the setbacks are already in place on the podium of the building. We are trying to take this project, as soon as it loads, to here. So this is the proposed 56-story version of the Imperial Tower. Again, previously approved at 35. We have before you a principal roof height of 55 stories. You had the original application at 35. You have the 20 additional stories for the inclusionary housing compliance, and we have triggered a new variance at the rooftop with the amenity space. The previous redevelopment plan permitted 20% roof coverage. In the rewrite, in the last rewrite of the redevelopment plan, it dropped it to 10%. Therefore, we cannot comply with the new ordinance at 10%. We are leaving the previous 20%, but it triggers an extra story. So it's 35 plus the 20, plus the previously approved rooftop amenity with restaurant. So that is where we came to 56. Very quickly, once again, only a change in residential density, but we are including, from 252 to 542, we're including 63 units at 11.6 for the affordable component. This project also has 154 hotel rooms. That doesn't change from the 35-story version to the 55-story version. We also are providing 202 parking spaces to go with both the banquet hall and the restaurant uses. We're providing 295 bicycle parking spaces with eight outside. This application has two retail spaces at grade level, one located on Cottage Street to the east, and we have a cafe, hotel cafe, at the first floor, which is the southern portion of the first floor. The banquet hall and the restaurants from the 35-story went from 34th and 35th to 54th and 55th. So they move up all the way to the top of the building, and then the residential affordable component gets sandwiched in from 30. from thirty-five to basically fifty-three. Uh, very briefly, a new analysis, a new quick breakdown of what we have here. We have a hundred and eight studios in the new version of this project, they range from five fifty-three to five ninety-six, two hundred and fifty-two one bedrooms, and they range from six twenty-five to six eighty-four, seventy-two one bedrooms plus then at eight fourteen to eight fifty-six, seventy-two two bedrooms at eleven hundred to eleven fifty-four, twenty-five two bedrooms plus then at twelve sixty-nine, and eleven three bedrooms uh at one thousand two hundred and forty-eight, which is compliant with the two percent requirement of the redevelopment plan. A lot of those three bedrooms will be a part of the affordable housing component.
So counsel, I feel like we're moving faster than we should be moving. I feel like Mr. Vandermark is trying to move faster than he's even comfortable moving. We're not getting through this, I don't wanna rush through this, I do wanna go back a couple of slides, though. And I wanna just make sure that everybody understands this foundation or podium has already been constructed.
Correct.
And now we're trying to work what was approved and constructed for that project into what is being proposed as the new version of that project. Is that fair, I guess? I should've had you give your overview.
That's right, and I agree, there's, 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 there's a lot of meat that has to be put on this bone, you know, and.
Okay, this, yeah, I think there is.
And so that everybody understands what, you know, what we're doing here, cause it is a unique situation and a unique opportunity, because we are dealing with what's already there with the columns. Um, we have to use, use those columns because they're, you know, they're, they've been piled, driven in. And um we have to reinforce them going up, so that limits our ability to, to meet the setbacks at the upper floors. But at the same time, we're, we're, my clients see this as an opportunity to provide, you know, a larger project, but with the affordable housing in it. Um, to take advantage, this is, this was the intent of the amendment that was passed in August. So you're gonna have, the prior project had no affordable housing, um, this one's gonna have sixty-three affordable uh units. Um, so, you know, we think it's, it's a win-win altogether, but we do have to work with what's already been constructed. Uh, my clients made the decision, the business decision to stop and then to come back to the board, you know, which is not an easy decision, but um that's when we get to the variance part and the deviations, you'll, you'll see why we're asking for that relief, because if it was, you know, a blank slate, round up, you know, it'd be a different story that, that we're discussing with the board tonight.
And I don't wanna prejudge anything, I don't know if that's, you know, gonna get you into a hardship position or not, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, and we'll address it, whether, Anthony said hardship, it is, it's, it's a hardship in that it is, it is constructed. Could we build what's already approved? Yes. We think the, there's a lot of benefits outweighing the detriments here because of uh, because of the affordable housing component that, that real, and, and a signature location and an opportunity to provide, you know, the first project with affordable housing under the new ordinance. So with that said, I think we're probably ran out, I probably just ran out the clock, um, so uh.
But I don't think it's fair to everybody to, to rush it, I think it's important, I think everybody needs the testimony, I don't think it's fair to the board, I don't think it's fair to Mr. Vandermark, who I am sure spent a lot of time trying to, to bring this forward. I can't imagine that this is something that he just clapped his hands and made happen, I, I don't believe that, so. I think that, you know, we have to go through it at the proper pace. And I think this, you know, is, is worthy of that, so.
And I agree, I think if we laid out so everybody understands what we're trying to do here, I think hopefully everyone will agree that this, this is, this is a great opportunity um uh for this project. But not too fast.
All right, so Cameron, what are we looking at?
We, we'll have to carry it to March twenty-fifth. Uh, our next meeting has an item on it that is going to, it's been carried since uh October. And we can accommodate this at the next meeting.
Well, it's hoping since we started.
Carrying it to March twenty-fifth because we've opened it, right? Or you wanna carry it to the first meeting in April?
March eleventh isn't available since we opened it and continue under old business?
The case that I'm talking about has a matter that is under old business, has testimony.
Ongoing with open testimony, so. I don't. I wanna give you a date and I wanna, you're looking at an hour and a half?
Probably about at least an hour.
At least an hour.
We can put it at the end of March eleventh, but I, I don't even know what the point of that would be.
Position, I want it at the top of the agenda on the twenty-fifth.
Top of March twenty-fifth.
Sure that we get through it.
Yeah.
So that's what we're gonna do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
So March twenty-fifth, and Cam, seriously, I want it.
Oh, it'll be an old business with testimony taken.
Yeah. All right, so this matter's being carried to March twenty-fifth, there will be no further notice. We will see everybody then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, while I'm up here, what are, what are we doing with the other applications that were behind this? I had the, the one, the next one.
Eighteen and nineteen.
Right.
They, they would have to go to March twenty-fifth, too.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah, but they'd be under new business.
Yes. Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, with that said, let's uh do memorialization of resolutions, please.
Chair, there's fourteen resolutions.
Lordy, don't take that with you, sorry.
Think I'm gonna need two bottle of water. All right, Santo? No, I'm good, thank you. Resolution of the planning board for the city of Jersey City approving an extension of preliminary site plan approval, applicant one thirty-four Bay Street LLC for extension of preliminary site plan approval, property three fifty-two Lewis Marin Boulevard, block one one five zero nine, lot three, case number is P zero two four dash zero two two one. Resolution of the planning board for the city of Jersey City, applicant is Homestead Market LLC for preliminary major site plan approval with deviation variances thirty-two dash forty Cottage Street and seven zero three dash seven zero seven Newark Avenue, block seven nine zero two, lots twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty. Jersey City, New Jersey, case number P two zero two four dash zero zero six. Resolution of the planning board for the city of Jersey City, applicant is two eighty-five Newark Avenue LLC for final major site plan amendments, approval two eighty-five Newark Avenue, block one two nine zero six, lots sixteen and seventeen, Jersey City, New Jersey, case P two zero two four dash zero one one nine. Uh, resolution for the planning board for the city of Jersey City, applicant is three seven seven Ogden Avenue LLC for amendment, final major site plan approval with a C variance, four one five Palisade Avenue, also known as four fifteen, four seventeen Palisade Avenue, block three nine zero two, lots thirty-five point zero one, also known as block three nine zero two, lots thirty-five and thirty-six, case number is P two zero two four dash zero zero seven zero. Resolution of the planning board for the city of Jersey City, case number is P two zero two four dash zero two one four, applicant is Grand Harmon LLC, address seven forty-three Grand Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one seven two zero one, lots, lot one, decided on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth. Memorialize on Tuesday, February eleventh, application for time extension. Six applicants driven holding LLC for minor site plan approval with C variances, two eighty-five Forest Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two one three zero five, lots twelve, case number P zero two three dash zero zero two four. Applicant DM, DM Capital Group LLC, address is three seventy-three dash three seventy-five, Fourth Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one one zero zero two, lot six and seven. On Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, memorialize on Tuesday, February eleventh, applicant application for preliminary and major fight, major site plan approval with C variance. Case P two zero two four dash zero one one zero, applicant six ten Communipa Avenue LLC, six ten Communipa Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one seven nine zero two, lot twenty-three, decided on January twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, memorialize on February eleven, twenty twenty-five, applicant, application for site plan amendments. Case number P two zero two three dash zero one one two for minor site plan with variances. Applicant is Saber Mansour, addresses two fifty-nine Baldwin Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block nine six zero six, lot five. Case number P two zero two four dash zero two one for withdrawal of prior approval, applicant is two oh three Baldwin Holding LLC, address is two oh three. Baldwin Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, lot one zero eight three two, block one zero eight three two, lot thirty-two. Applicant Kind Buds, Jersey City, for conditional use approval. Address is five forty-five Newark Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block nine six zero one, lot nine, case number is P zero two four dash zero one five six. Applicant is K R E Acquisition Corp. For preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations and variances, block one one six zero six, lot one. Approved lots one point zero one and one point zero two, seventy-two Montgomery Street, case number is P zero two four dash zero one four zero. Applicant is K R E Acquisition Corp. For preliminary and final major site, major subdivision approval, block one one six zero six, lot one, block one one six zero six. Proposed lots one point zero one and one point zero two, seventy-two Montgomery Street. Case numbers P zero two four dash zero one four one. Applicant is Ramon Narayna Properties LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances, three twenty-five dash three twenty-eight Johnston Avenue, block one sevens five zero five, lots one ten and eleven, Jersey City, New Jersey, case numbers P zero two three dash zero zero five five.
All right, so I have a second. Acting Vice Chair Gangadhan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince RA?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres? Commissioner Cruz? Commissioner Dr. Desai? And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries on in favor, favor to memorialize resolutions. Santo, do you need executive session? Do you need executive session? No, all right, motion to adjourn from somebody?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, guys, get home safe.